Hello? Whoa, whoa. Somebody's...where are you? Who did that? Raise your hand if you just turned this on, because it wasn't on initially. I'm trying to find the sound guy. Okay, I can't. Anyway. Good evening. For those of you who are on time, we'll get started on time, or kind of on time. My name is David Rowepeak, and I'm here for a couple reasons. First of all, I'm your neighbor. I'm from Concord, Massachusetts, and we will set aside for the evening the debate over where the Revolutionary War really started. I'm here to moderate the meeting, and let me tell you why. I've been asked to moderate it because I was a TV reporter for 25 years, and I covered meetings like this a lot, on lots of issues. In fact, a lot of them were environmental issues, in schools, in Suffolk County courthouse, in lots of buildings. And while they were great for the camera, I observed that they weren't always...they didn't always end up in constructive ways for the community, for either side of the conversation, or for the tax rolls, or the kids, or the schools. It didn't remember...it didn't matter what it was. So when I left there 10 years ago, I went into the line of work that I'm in now, which is trying to help facilitate constructive, productive relationships around risk issues so that communities can more constructively get to whatever they mutually think is the healthiest decision. So moderating, facilitating, that's all I am. Let me go through what's going to happen tonight. It's partly information, but it's mostly conversation. There are a panel of people you won't hear from at all, a mall, and you won't hear a lot from any of them until you ask them questions. It's not going to be one of those long spiel things. And note, there's no screen for PowerPoint. Let me tell you who's on the panel. I'll just go through the list, and who everybody is, and point them out as I go, so you'll know who's here. Some of them are here to give you information, and a lot of them are here because they have expertise in case a question gets asked. The first is the superintendent, Dr. Paul Ash. The second, in...I'll go in the order of the table as opposed to the order on the... Yes, would you stand up so that we can...got it? That's the superintendent. Want to look at him again? You'll be seeing him a lot. The next is Kim Teza. She's the person at the EPA in charge of this for all of New England, PCBs within their regulatory regime, and she has overseen and is continuing to oversee issues just like this in a lot of communities. And her expertise here particularly is, what's the risk? Not just, but what's the risk? Number three is Dr. Wendy Hyger Bernays. Did I say that...how did I do? Oh, Wendy, oh! I typed it wrong, my bad. Wendy Hyger Bernays, who is the chairman of your Board of Health. She's also trained...she's also an assistant professor at Boston University School of Public Health, a really progressive school of public health, by training a molecular toxicologist who has worked in regulatory toxicology and risk assessment, all of which I say only because those are relevant to how she's going to help oversee all this. They're relevant fields. It's not like she knows childhood health or something like that instead. And with her is Jerry Cody, who is the director of the Health Division, and he's been handling this more on a day-to-day basis, and will assist filling in the details should Dr. Hyger Bernays need to call him, which he was very happy with. The next is Pat Goddard. He is Lexington's Director of Public Facilities, and he's really been the point person for your community dealing with this issue since it first arose, actually got the remediation that's been done so far started, and he'll run you through a chronology of how we got here and be able to answer a lot of the facility sorts of questions that may arise. David McIntosh, the next three guys, three people, are from EH&amp;E, Environmental Health and Engineering. The first is David McIntosh. He is...let me put it this way. He's number two in the pecking order of the three of them at the table at the moment, but he's really the point person who really oversees this project, and has been actively involved. Let me tell you a little bit about EH&amp;E. When I had an indoor air issue that I needed some independent science on as a reporter, they're the ones I went to. I've done a little bit of work for them since, okay? They...I went to them because they didn't just say what their client wanted, but they are the client of the town, to help them figure out what's the school, what can we do, how to do it in the safest possible way. And by the way, there was an initial consultant that provided some data to the town, and there was some feedback on their data that it wasn't all that reliable, at which point the town said, "Let's get somebody who is..."that's them." So David McIntosh is the point person on that. Kevin Coughlin is the senior person from EH&amp;E overseeing him at the...well, it's not corporate level, but...and by the way, Kevin, and it's really important to know, you're not going through something that other communities haven't already gone through, and in New England, in fact, and at the University of Rhode Island and the University of Massachusetts, among other places, they've had exactly the same issue, the PCB caulk and the PCBs inside, and Kevin has overseen a lot of the research from that. And Matt Fragel is the kind of filling in the details because he's the day-to-day point person like Jerry is for the EH&amp;E team should the details come up. It's also one...excuse me. Yes, yes, please. Absolutely. By the way, notes are going to be kept on this meeting and all posted on the school's website tomorrow. Absolutely. Does that help any...is that any better? Okay, you just stand there now. Superintendent of Schools, head of all of this kind of stuff for the EPA, for Region One, the head of your local Board of Health, the point person who's been dealing with the details day-to-day more than the head of the Board of Public Health is, but from your local Board of Health, the facilities manager who first saw the problem, like, was it a year, year and a half ago, or whatever, and started doing stuff about it, and he'll run you through the chronology, the three people from Environmental Health and Engineering, which is the consulting company, the environmental team to figure out what's up, what the levels test to remediate and that kind of stuff. Good? Cut up? There was another hand? Yes, sir? I forget. I will repeat the questions. When we get to the Q&amp;A session, they'll be doing...they'll be done from the front, so everybody can hear them for sure. The first consulting group was... Universal Environmental Consultants from Framingham, and they ran some tests on the caulk itself, you know, is it there in the first place? And the methods were looked at by, what was it, the state? State Department of Public Health, and they said, "Good, but gooder is possible." So let me just continue running down the agenda so we can get to the meat of the matter you don't want to be hearing from me. The other thing you need to know about Environmental Health and Engineering, the people who are the environmental consultants from the town. Oh, when did Administrator Jackson make her statement on PCBs? September, the administrator of the EPA said, "This is a growing issue all over the country. We're going to have to start building towards like regulating it and doing stuff like that." They called EH&amp;E for advice. They also called EH&amp;E when they wanted help figuring out specifically the issue that's probably the one you want to get to, which is what is the actual risk? When they were doing a...was it epidemiological risk assessment? But it was actually the indoor, not just what to do about the issue broadly, but what are the actual risks here? Just saying that PCBs are there is not enough of an answer. These are the guys the EPA called, so that's who they are. Okay. The agenda is...yes, sir? At the moment, they're figuring out what's what, and they would prob...I should let them answer, and it will come up. The question was, the question was whether EH&amp;E is doing just the testing or the actual remediation itself. Let me let that come up in the meat of the order so that I can just stop talking about the agenda? Thank you. Good question. So the agenda is simple. First, the superintendent will make some opening remarks, and there are a number of actions that are going to be taken that you may not yet be aware of that he will announce. Okay? And you can ask him about them as we move down the agenda. So we'll go through the agenda first, and then it'll be Q&amp;A. So if people say stuff during their presentations that you want to ask questions about, we'll linger through the evening if it's a raise a hand for everybody, so they're all going to get a chance to do their little spiel, but write down the questions so you don't forget them, okay? So the superintendent, and then Pat will stand up and give us a brief rundown of all of what's happened so far. How did you all become aware of it? What's been done so far? What else is planned, et cetera? Then we'll hear from Dr. Hyger Bernays and Ms. Teza about the nut question, what's the safety? What does science know anyway, at this point, about the safety and the risk? And then it's conversation. And the last point that I'll make is the conversation only begins tonight. As you'll hear the superintendent say, there are two issues here. One is the physical state, if you will, of the school, and the other is this, this relationship. And so this is hopefully the beginning of the dialogue that will help you come to hopefully healthy and wiser choices that you can all agree on. So enough for me. When the questions come, I might just interject and redirect them to various people other than that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. I really, really appreciate it. As you can imagine, this is a, you know, this is a difficult situation for all of us, and we set up this particular forum last week. We made a decision it was important to have a meeting so that we could share some information with you and share only what we know, and what we don't know, we're not going to spin it or tell you anything any different. I care deeply about your children. People on the panel do. You're here because you deeply care about your children, and we want to do what's right. And so tonight's meeting, hopefully, will focus on at least two things. First, the health and safety of your children in Estabrook and the staff in the building. And the second is a dialogue. It's a conversation. We've done a lot of work trying to anticipate the questions that you're going to ask, and hopefully tomorrow or the next day, we're going to have a Q&amp;A up on our website, sort of summarizing the questions that you've asked, but perhaps we are going to hear some questions tonight that we haven't yet anticipated. So tonight is an opportunity for dialogue. I know there'll be very strong emotions. That's fine, and that's expected. And I've instructed the group, I told the people who came in, I said, "I only have one favor to ask of you. Tell the truth. Don't spin things. Say what you know, what you don't know. Say you don't know, and we're going to all try together to do the best job we can." Pardon me, second. So here's a piece of information all of you do know now because we've sent it out by email. There's no school tomorrow. And let me sort of explain what that, the thinking behind no school tomorrow. Obviously, it's a half day, and the weather's extremely hot, but we have an opportunity to accelerate the process of bringing air into the building and completely turning over the air. Our thought was, as of yesterday, we were going to have to wait till Saturday to bring in some heavy equipment that would replace the air, we think, at least three times for the entire building, bringing fresh air into the building. And I'll leave to the technical people how we're doing that, but we're going to start that tomorrow so that by the time we reopen, there will be multiple times, multiple times we're going to bring fresh air into the building, and we think that's going to help. More on that later from the group. And we can start that process tomorrow. It wasn't that we got directives from the EPA from anybody else. It said, "For health reasons, you should close the building." But why not take an opportunity in a half day? It's really, really hot. Accelerate the air filtration process, the process of moving the air a day earlier. Over the weekend, they're also going to continue to look at, are there other sources of PCBs in the building? Now, caulk is certainly one of the places where the PCBs could be coming from, but it's also possible it could be coming from other locations. So over the next couple of days, the experts will be in the building doing testing of other surfaces to see if there are other sources of the PCBs. The other thing I want to share with you, and this goes to the importance of having a conversation, I'm setting up an advisory committee to me that would look at the data that comes in and share with me what you think. The committee would have on it, the advisory committee would have on it, three parents, and so please send your names if you're interested to Betsy Sarals. The first meeting will be thir- Betsy's the- Betsy's your PTA president. And... Big round of applause. Thank you. Yeah. I'll repeat it. Go ahead. estabrookpta@gmail.com? There you go. Okay. So if you're interested... Okay. So if you're interested, you've got to send in your name. We're looking at a meeting that would be held during the day, next Thursday, a week from, week from this Thursday. I can't tell you what time because we're going to schedule it probably, we think, probably in the afternoon when we have the data. That's the expected time where we're going to get the results from the testing that we're going to do over the weekend. Because it's Labor Day weekend, even the most expedited process won't allow us to get the data before that. So on that committee will be some parents, three parents, some teachers, Ms. Trock is the principal of the school, you know, some experts from EH&amp;E, and some other people who are not affiliated necessarily with Lexington but are experts in the field. And their job would be to look at all the information and tell me what they think. And so this is the step that I'm taking to hopefully assure you that this is a dialogue and that we're going to look at this situation together and do what we think is right. So thank you again for coming, and hopefully you learned a lot tonight.
Thank you, sir. One of the things that was pointed out to me in the, when we're getting ready for the meeting, and he talked about the decision to create this advisory committee, is there's some getting up to speed on the science or the technical details of this that the participants will have to do so they know what they're talking about, not college level. But what would you say, a few hours worth of reading materials so that it's not just like sitting there not knowing and just reviewing what comes in? It's, there's a little bit of learning to get up to speed. So if you're thinking about volunteering, I just wanted to add that in. So Pat, can I bring you up here, please? Or you want to do...yeah, yeah. It's a lot easier that way. I don't have to hold the microphone, and you don't. Pat is the head of your facilities department and has been overseeing what exactly has been happening.
Good evening. I'm Pat Goddard, the Director of Public Facilities. This process started just about a year ago. Labor Day weekend last year, the Boston Globe ran a front-page story on the risk in older buildings of PCB-contaminated caulk. So I read that article, as many of you did, and realized this was potentially an issue for Lexington, as many as you did as well. Within a couple hours, my BlackBerry started buzzing, and Dr. Ash was already getting queries from the community, "What about our buildings?" And as people came back to school, they were asking their principals as well, "What do we know about PCB and caulk in our school buildings?" So we strategized, Dr. Ash and I, and the town manager, Carl Valenti, and Jerry Cody, the Director of the Health Division, and we developed the plan to do some screening of buildings, and then we would bring that information to the Board of Health. We did that. We used the Universal Environmental Consulting, which has helped us on other projects. They did the level of screening. We were looking to, for this level, and we brought that information to the Board of Health, and basically it identified three buildings: Town Office Building, Clark Middle School, and Estabrook Elementary School. As we talked with the board, we all agreed that the levels that we were bringing to them were not satisfactory to be able to determine the health risk for students, but we were hoping that this would give us some direction of what the next steps would be. The amount of testing needs to be done to identify the health risk is a much more expensive test and time-consuming test than the one we did. So by working with the board, the board released a, excuse me, press release on May 10th that announced where we were in this process and that we were going to be looking for a consultant to help us in the next phase. Prior to that, at town meeting, as we did capital planning, we identified to town meeting that we did have building envelope projects that were going to take place at these three buildings. The Clark project was a continuation of the project we had started in 2009 that we actually put on hold due to this PCB and caulk issue that was identified in September of 2009. So we did go ahead and finish that project this year, and had planned to do the Estabrook work and Town Office Building work. As we got in, as we identified Environment Health and Engineering as being an appropriate consultant that could help us with this, Jerry and I met with the principals of EH&amp;E, and we worked out a contract to get the project started in early June. We did the screening process again on the caulk for these three buildings, and they reported back the results of that in July. And then we went into the very time-consuming air analysis of the same three buildings. We were cognizant of this whole time period of when school started, and our objective was to be able to do any work that we were going to need to do on any of the buildings before school started. And as we talked with EH&amp;E from June through current, that was always the objective. We got our results on August 9th, that we had levels in the Estabrook school that were above the EPA maximum threshold recommendation. So that was a cause for us then to realize that we needed to do something more significant than we thought we might have to do. We'd be able to get that work done before the school started on whatever yesterday was, today, yesterday. We needed to approach three agencies and get waivers. We needed to get a waiver from Division of Capital Asset Management to do without the usual advertisement for construction processes, construction bid processes. We needed to get our interim plan approved by the EPA, that they accepted that we could do an interim plan in time for school to start, and we needed to contact the Mass Department of Environmental Protection to get a waiver on asbestos removal. They asked, "Well, why did asbestos come into this?" It's because in this caulk, there was also asbestos that had been added to the caulk back in the 60s to give it additional strength. So since there was asbestos in there, we also had to treat it as an asbestos product, and that was part of the protocol that was followed for the removal. So we not only needed to do that, we needed to get in a special appropriation from the Appropriation Committee to transfer funds from the reserve fund in the town to cover this remediation cost. The contract we had with our contractor was approximately, well, it was $142,000 to get this work done. So the work is basically complete on the inside of the school. On the outside of the school, we've removed all the PCBs. We're doing some detailed cleaning at this point to make sure everything is suitable for the next phase, which is to seal the brick, and that work's going to be taking place through the remainder of this week. When we did the work, we did it in phases with the intention of doing the fifth-grade classes, the two fifth-grade rooms first, and getting air sampling done so we'd have those results before school started. We got those on Friday evening, and unfortunately, they came in higher than we'd anticipated. We'd all thought that the rates would go lower than they had been, but in actuality, some of the rates went up higher, from an order of, and they're around 300 to 400 to about 450. So then we got four more results on Sunday night, where again, three of the results were almost the same as before, if not higher, but we did get room number six, one of the first grade rooms, down considerably, where it had been at 1,800, we got that number down to about 750. So that was good news. And then yesterday morning, we got the final two results, which again, were higher than we'd anticipated. They were higher than, or in the same range basically as where we started. So since yesterday, we've been strategizing that we feel that we need to ensure that we're, we get good airflow through the building. We think room six came down because it has a different type of ventilation system than the typical classroom where we have unit ventilators, and they're not a very efficient air exchange piece of equipment. The room six has a more of a central-type system where the fan is below the room, and we're able to measure 200 CFM air changes. So we think that had a significant factor on dropping that room, and we're hopeful that by getting in the cla, into the building tomorrow, adding four 2,000 CFM fans into the building and basically pressurizing the corridors from the exterior doorways, and then opening all the classroom windows about an inch so that we can pressurize the building and force flow, excuse me, force flow to all the rooms and begin in a positive airflow through the rooms over this long weekend. So that's one of the reasons that, as Dr. Ash said, he recommended we close the school for tomorrow to get a jump on that and maximize available time here. We're also going to be doing some other exercises with our consultant here to identify other potential sources over this time, so if we want to get the results back, if we still have an issue... So if we want to get the results back, if we still have an issue, we've hopefully by then identified other sources. So that's kind of where we're at now and what the beginning of the project was just almost a year ago today.
Thank you, Pat. If there are any questions about him, write them down so we'll make sure we get them. One of the things that I wanted to add was, I think in the earlier conversations we had today, they expect that the air with the super machinery, they're going to use these CFMs and so forth, will there be at least three whole, was that what you were saying, David? The air exchange over the weekend with the extra time, there'd be at least three whole air exchanges? Many more than that, okay. So that's just to give you an idea of, it's not just turning a fan on. So to the heart of the matter, let me give you your, head of your board of health and the question...
Well, actually, when I was asked to, when I was asked to come to this meeting, I was asked to come and answer questions and that the team was going to defer and present...
We wanted somebody at the beginning to give some perspective on the risk question, the heart question. So Kim, you probably can help?
Thank you. I just want to let you know that you're not the only school in Region 1 or across the country that has these issues. I don't know if you've seen a lot in the paper, but the same issue is going on in New York City and that started several years ago and they have much higher indoor air levels than you do. And some of the things that they've been doing are some of the things you're going to be hearing about tonight and have heard about to some degree with respect to flushing out the building to the best we can and re-sampling to see where we are, looking for other sources. And that was something that was recently identified in New York to be one of the problems, was another source that had been previously unidentified. So those are some of the things you're going to be hearing about. And I just want to let you know that everybody keeps on talking about these numbers. They exceed EPA screening numbers. And that's true, but I want you to also be aware that the numbers that were established by EPA were screening numbers. They are meant to be very conservative numbers and that they were put into account with a large adequate margin of safety, if you will. So I don't want you to be concerned that just because you have numbers that exceed our upper numbers somewhat, that there's no cause for panic at this point because those numbers were safety margins built in. It's just a screening number, there's nothing definitive on those numbers. So with that in mind, I want you to listen to what's going on, see what the next steps are and hopeful that we can get the numbers down because the primary goal at this point is to make sure we've identified all the sources, we address those sources, but that we can get the indoor and air numbers down. And I think that's the goal of most of the projects we've been dealing with at this point. Thank you.
And I'm just going to ask you one question to get the question started. I remember as a reporter, I always wanted to know what was the number, the safe or not number. And I learned that there's threshold numbers that, you referred to this, but actually, these are guideline numbers. And so here's what that means. Is anybody familiar with the radon issue? You know, you screen your house and if you have a certain level, then you look into whether you have risk. Do you spend that much time in the basement, et cetera? They're like guidelines. This is like a yellow light, a warning. So as I understand it, these are guideline numbers?
Yes, they are screening numbers. We call them screening numbers. And the goal is at this point to try to get the indoor numbers below those numbers because those are numbers that, again, we've built in safety factors and we're confident that those are good safety factors, but still, we want to be below those numbers.
Does the number mean above it, yes, below it, no? They're grayer than that, as I understand it.
Just because, again, just because the number may exceed our, just because an indoor air number may exceed our screening number does not mean that there's going to be harm. It's just a number to say, at that concentration, we really want you to do your due diligence, see if you have other sources and to try to take measures to reduce those indoor air concentrations.
So that we can hear everybody, you guys, if you have questions, I can run around the line. It's probably easier to come up here, line up, sorry. And if anybody can hear, would you say, I'll try to repeat. One question, a couple of questions, just who you are, what you're doing, just so everybody knows who they're talking to. Oh. You know how I said it's about dialogue? It really is, except I forgot the guy's at the end of the table. Which will answer one of the questions you had, Ari, which is, do they test and/or remediate? Kevin, David, David? My bad.
Thank you. Wanted the opportunity to answer the question. Oh, thank you, Kevin. Thank you for the opportunity to answer the question and to be here tonight to tell you what we've been doing and what we're recommending to the town and what, as a result, we will be doing over the next few days. Then I'll answer those questions along with Kevin and Matt as they come along. But let me just first answer the question that was raised by Mr. Moses. Who asks, is our firm, Environmental Health and Engineering, which, just so you know, is based in Needham, are we consulting with the town and giving them recommendations on how to proceed based on the results of our analyses? Yes, we are doing that. That is, that is what we do as professional consultants and as environmental health scientists and industrial hygienists and mechanical engineers. Are we performing the remediation work itself? For example, did we remove the caulk along the exterior of the window frames at Estherbrook last week? No. We do not perform the remediation work itself. We specify how it should be done after we've discovered where the action is needed. We give our recommendation to the town and in this case, we gave it to Pat and Pat in turn identified contractors who were qualified and retained one of those organizations to perform the work.
Can you very briefly just describe, you said, I heard you say that there's some more testing coming up for other sources? You want to just describe that right now as long as you have the floor at the moment?
Sure, sure. So the request was, could we talk a little bit about the work that's planned for the next few days at least? Here's what it is. We've identified, again, the caulk around the exterior of the window frames, many of them, except for, all of them except for the modular addition to the school as having PCB-containing caulk. Those levels were, the concentrations of PCBs in the caulk were above the authorized concentrations or limits established by a United States law, the Toxic Substances Control Act, and it's what Kim's very, very familiar with. So that caulk needed to be removed. We thought, based on our past experience in engaging in exactly this type of analysis in many other buildings throughout New England and by reading case reports of buildings throughout the country and the world with this situation, we thought that the indoor air levels would go down. That was what we have observed in building after building. When they did not go down, they essentially stayed about the same, we were a bit surprised. And what it tells us, what it suggests is, an other source is likely to be present. And we will begin tomorrow with Matt at the lead of our field team, we will begin to inspect the building more closely for potential sources indoors. We know, we know that PCBs might be present on some materials indoors for one of two reasons or maybe both. One reason is maybe the materials manufactured in the 1960s actually contain PCBs intentionally. That's why the PCBs were in the caulk that was on the exterior. It's a terrific plasticizer. It's heat resistant. But those same properties make it persistent, which is an unfortunate aspect. So anyway, other materials in the building may have it. Examples might be capacitors in electrical components such as the ballasts in fluorescent lights, although we've already ruled that out because we inspected all the ballasts in the lights. There might also be capacitors associated with the fan motors in the unit ventilators that Pat mentioned. It could be, we recently learned that some ceiling tiles in the past were manufactured with PCBs intentionally for their plasticizer and heat resistant properties. So, and there are other potential sources and so we'll start with the most likely and we will screen them and we will look at the results, we'll share them with our client and I'm sure they will be shared with you and we'll continue the dialogue and we'll move ahead.
Did I forget anybody, Mr. Superhead, this time? Questions, please?
So then who is doing the remediation? Who did the previous removal of the caulk and who's planned to do the sealing of the bricks? Can we find out who those people are?
We've hired a contractor, LVI, a local company, and LVI to do the remediation work. They've done other successful projects with EH and E and this is their specialty, to do environmental remediation.
Anu Sharma, my son's in third grade, Estherbrook. Question I had was, on this PCB levels, once you've remediated this PCB, the level should be zero, right? I mean, if there's no PC, when you take the caulk out and these other sources, we're not talking about ranges, we're talking about zero. Can you explain why we talk about safety ranges after remediation? Why shouldn't it be a PCB-free building when you're done?
We're happy to talk about that. So the question, as I understood it was, and Kevin or Matt, anyone else jump in if you like? Questions, I understood, should we expect to, should we expect an interior space of building to be free of PCBs? And if not, why? Well, the answer, the short answer to the question is, no, we should not expect them to be PCB-free. Why? The why is, these molecules are very persistent. That means that they resist breaking down in the environment. They're resistant to microbes chewing them up, they're resistant to the ultraviolet light from the sun breaking them apart, they're resistant to the solution activity of water to break them apart. So, and these chemicals were manufactured in the United States from the, what was it? The late 1920s through 1977 approximately, when they were banned by the EPA. They are present in, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, here's the truth, is that they're present in the air that we breathe when we walk outside this building. They're likely to be present in the air inside of this building that we're breathing, not necessarily because there's a source, but because they're coming in from the outdoor air. The other truth, they're in the soil outside and they're in our bodies. They're in the food that we eat. These are all very low concentrations though, all very low concentrations. And it's a fact of life that, you know, water runs downhill. And a way to think, what I mean is, molecules such as these move from areas of high concentration to low concentration, like diffusion, just by heat, like heat, for example. The air inside, when you open your hot oven, the air, the hot air doesn't stay there, it moves out. It's trying, the air is trying to reach an equal temperature everywhere. The same idea with these molecules. So we should not expect to find zero PCBs, but we should strive to get the levels in the school air below the screening concentrations established by the EPA. And that's what, that's what we're doing.
Hi, Ryle Mahoney, parent of two Estherbrook kids, current kids, one in, one in high school that went to Estherbrook. I'm a construction guy, I'm used to dealing with companies like yourselves in remediating asbestos, mold, that type of thing and understand that there are very prescriptive guidelines that you have to follow for doing these types of remediation. There's a gap in our collective communication on what level of remediation was described, what was performed, and I'm hoping you can just fill in the gaps and tell us what it was because generally, you know, if you're dealing with something that's, something that can become an airborne threat, particulate threat, then there are certain guidelines you have to do. You've got to provide negative air, you've got to close the space off, vent everything out through HEPA filters so you're not contaminating the ground, that kind of thing. I understand, I'm looking through the EPA websites and I understand that there are lower levels of remediation that is okay. I'm seeing, I'm talking to industrial hygienists like yourselves that I work with and try and understand, hey, what is the real risk here? Can you just elaborate on that and tell us that, you know, and it's new news to me that there was actually asbestos in the caulkings as well. My understanding is that as long as it's in a matrix that doesn't make it dust-borne, that's not a concern and you can just scrape that stuff and make it go away. So please expound on that. And then second part of that is, going forward, I understand that we're changing the air out, but what specific requirements are we putting in place to, if the airborne aspect is a concern, to clean the ductwork, to, you know, I understand you can spray and encapsulate this stuff, I'm cool with that, I get it. You know, I do it all the time, but this is something that I don't deal with in residential construction. It's new to all of us. I thank God for some of the cooler minds here that have prevailed and laid out some of the science, but we need to fill the gap, so please let us know.
Excellent questions. I'm going to ask my colleague Kevin to start answering this because he wrote, he was the primary author of the detailed work plan for those activities that you asked about in the first part of your question that was submitted to EPA and Kim in accordance with each other type of remediation activity such as this that we do.
So in this particular case, we actually had two agencies we had to work with. One was the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. They actually regulate the asbestos issue in the caulk. You are correct. It's what's called a non-friable material. That's just a fancy term for a material that can't easily be crumbled and pulverized into a powder just simply by picking it up and crushing it with your fingers. That's, it's a scientific definition of friable. This was a non-friable material, meaning that it still had some elasticity to it, it's a caulk. So the asbestos, it's very difficult for the asbestos to be released from that product. And as a result, there are certain regulations that actually govern how you handle that material that is regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection. That's the agency we actually had to get a waiver from, one of the agencies we had to get a waiver from that you heard about earlier, because you do have to do a notification. As you know, if you're in this industry, you know about notifying 10 days in advance. Well, we didn't have 10 days. And so we actually appealed to them to say, we have a situation here, we really need to move quickly on this, and they gave us, and they approved the waiver. The contractor that does the work also has to be licensed as well and trained. The other agency we had to deal with is, of course, the Environmental Protection Agency, working with Kim on this particular issue. Kim is the one that regulates this work in Region 1, which is essentially New England. And so there's some procedures that have to be followed there as well. So there's really a fair, a high level of oversight on this particular project because we had actually two agencies that we had to satisfy separate requirements for. Just very quickly to give you a sort of overview of what we did and then if there are more questions about specifics, we can answer that. It did involve sealing up entry points into the building. It involved also sealing around the window frames themselves, so with another non-PCB caulk material, obviously. And it also involved a localized negative pressure with the use of a vacuum cleaner fitted with a HEPA filter. Many of you probably have heard that term before. It's a very high efficiency filter for capturing particulates. And they did this all with hand scrapers and no cutting tools, no power tools because we didn't want to, you know, basically break the material down and get it into the air.
But that's different than providing a negative air environment.
Right, what you're talking about...
What he says, that's different than providing some other negative air environment, HEPA vacuuming, some additional remediation...
Yeah, I just want to understand what the EPA guidelines prescribe.
Right. Well, and certainly, you know, Kim Tisa can comment from her perspective, but the DEP has some very prescriptive guidelines that you have to follow and it's pretty much, here's the recipe and here's how you do it and that's what you do. And then, but the EPA has more of a performance-based approach when it comes to these types of issues on these projects. And that's why you have to submit your plan to Kim and work with her to satisfy her that you're doing it appropriately. Again, what we're worried about here is making sure that we're not crushing, but your material is essentially, again, it's a non-friable material, it can't become airborne very easily. And so you're trying to use those vacuum cleaners just to make sure that as you're scraping it out or pulling the caulk out, any debris at all that gets generated is captured right there. It doesn't get a chance to get into the air.
If you've got a second part to your question and I want to make sure you get it, but if I may add one thing? I'm sorry. It came up in the discussions as we preparing this question about particles, bits. It's interesting and the scientists can describe this at greater length, but there's a difference here between physical particles and vapor, gaseous vapor. Because, for example, one of the things they did, they tell me, and they can describe this more, is they wiped the place clean. this more, is they wiped the place clean. They did a lot of wiping for particles. But it's not particles that are the issue here. It's more gaseous. So, if you could describe that. And then, the second part of your question was, what are the requirements and regulations going forward if the air continues to be a concern, including cleaning the ducts, which I think gets to your particle sort of questions. Why ask that?
Okay, so the disposition or the nature of PCBs in air is what we're talking about. So, they're interesting material, PCBs. They're in a class of chemicals that are called semi-volatile. So, what can we contrast that with? Well, volatile would be... Imagine the gasoline that you might put into your gasoline-powered vehicle, and if you spill a little bit on the... Or a little bit spills on the concrete as you're filling your tank, and you look down, that spill disappears very quickly. It evaporates quickly. That's a volatile liquid. Non-volatile would be a solid. Think table salt, for example. Semi-volatile, somewhere in between. And it will... And that's PCBs. The material will want to be both in... Well, primarily PCBs want to be, is in a liquid form attached to organic matter. Think dirt. Think dirt, the nice humus you might have in your garden at home. That's the kind of materials PCBs really like to be attached to. But, they're also trying to achieve some equilibrium between... Say, they want to find some equal pressure, so to speak, between their levels in the soil and the air. And so, some small fraction of the PCBs that's as a liquid or attached to organic matter, some small fraction of that will go into the air. And that's a continuous process. And what we've... And that process, that separation, the... How much is in the air relative to how much is in the solid, or how fast the material moves into the air is temperature-dependent. So, what we know is that in the air, we know from our own sampling, we know from reading scientific papers on analyses done in many other locations, outdoors and indoors, that PCBs in air are almost exclusively in the vapor phase, in the gas phase. You'll find some, small amount, in the particle phase, more in the winter than you... Outdoors than you would in the summer outdoors, but mainly in the vapor phase. Right. So, the question about controlling dust that might be generated through the remediation activity, that's not so much about PCBs that might be in these tiny microscopic particles that we're breathing all the time that we can't see. It's not that. It's that it's big pieces of debris, dust, et cetera, that would be generated by the mechanical activity. So, that's what was tried to be controlled.
Does that answer your concern about the ducts, too?
Is that part of the plan, that you're doing the air change?
We're definitely going to inspect the ducts and look at the level of settled material that may be in there. It's... Esterbrook's a typical school for New England of its vintage in this way, that most of the rooms, in fact, all but a handful of the rooms at Esterbrook, have what people call unit ventilators, as Pat mentioned and described them. So, these devices sit in the exterior wall, and they pull in a little bit of air from outside, and they recirculate air using a fan that's inside, and they push it back into the room. And in the wintertime, that's how the heat from the hot water pipes is distributed into the room. In the summertime, or in the temperate time, you can provide some airflow, like a fan in your house. It'd be like a fan, like a box fan, for example. Be acting similarly. So, they don't... Those devices don't really have ducts, so to speak, but we are definitely going to be inspecting the interior of them, because dust can settle, can accumulate in them. And that dust could be a secondary source of PCBs if they've absorbed PCBs from the air over time. There are some rooms in the school that are ventilated by a fan and duct system that is in the basement of the school. And we will certainly inspect those pieces of ductwork as well.
So, regarding the concern, the air conditioning is sort of secondary to outgassing all of the material that happens?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, just to restate the question in my answer, yes, the concern or the... The levels in the air that we're measuring are almost certainly from vapors that are released from a solid phase of the PCBs somewhere in the building.
Thank you for waiting.
That's what we're doing.
All set? Thank you.
My name's Jennifer Breen. I have two children at Esterbrook. I have a bunch of questions. I don't want to be the one to take up all the time tonight, but I'll start at least with one that I came up last night at the selectmen's meeting, which I attended, and where I heard that EPA was doing a risk assessment. I haven't heard that mentioned in any of our written communications or haven't heard it mentioned tonight. I'm wondering if somebody on the board could clarify... I personally have some familiarity with the risk assessment process. I don't know when the term was used last night, if it was used in EPA's traditional sense of risk assessment, but if it was, if you could explain how the risk assessment process works, what the expected outcome will be, and how it will be used, and what the timeframe is for that.
I think I miscommunicated on that from my discussion with Kim earlier in the day, and then when I followed up with her today. I thought that's what she was saying, but it wasn't what she was saying. She was saying she was going to talk to her risk...
Kim? Kim gets the mic.
What I said, and nice to meet you, Jennifer. What I said was, I was... I wanted all the data, so that I would have an opportunity to talk to our risk assessors about the data and what it meant, but that we weren't going to go off and do a risk assessment based on that data. That's what the...
Okay.
That's what Jerry got a little confused.
Okay, that's more comforting to know that.
Yes, yes.
And that's what it meant about those guidelines. They signaled pay attention more, and that's what's happening.
Right. Well, I guess a follow-up question would be, if the air levels continue to be elevated and the additional inspections going on this week cannot identify an additional source that would be the target for additional abatement or remediation, would the next step be to do a risk assessment? Or what would the next step in the process be at that point?
The guidance in our web actually says that if you get PCBs that... Or if you have concentrations that you actually know that, we actually recommend that you go in and do a risk assessment based on the data that you have. So, you never take everything just verbatim based on numbers, but you can certainly go in and put in your site-specific conditions and do that risk assessment. So, certainly, that's something that may be recommended, but we really want to get to this first point, which is to go in and ascertain the sources and really flush out the school and do additional sampling, because I think that's critical at this point.
Yep, okay.
To me, on behalf of everybody, since you know what a risk assessment kind of means, but everybody might not, is that something that's worth explaining? If that... If it comes to that, to know what that means? Is that... It's not too complicated?
I apologize. I'm not a risk assessor. I'm not a toxicologist. I'm only a technical person.
Jennifer, you could...
No, I don't feel like I'm qualified to explain it to the groups.
So, I am going to hand this over to somebody who is a toxicologist, and hopefully they'll help you out.
Thank you, Kim. Risk assessment is a tool. That's all it is, is a tool. It enables us to take two pieces of information. Information about the hazard, the toxicity of the hazard, what adverse effects may result from those hazards at certain concentrations or doses. And it combines that with measures of exposure. How are we exposed? Who is exposed? And under what conditions? So, we combine those two pieces of information, and the result is a measure typically of risk. And that risk can be a risk in terms of cancer risk. You know, what is the risk of cancer? And certainly, this is considered above background cancer rates. And the other is, what is the non-cancer risk? So, those would be the non-cancer effects. And so, that's what a risk assessment is. And when we talk about a site-specific risk assessment, that differs from the analysis that EPA had done to derive the guidelines. The guidelines are a more general type of risk assessment, where we use that same kind of information, but we make assumptions about the general population, or in this case, we would look at the most sensitive sub-populations. And that's why there are different guidelines for different ages, depending upon the population that we want to consider. So, in this case, if you do a site-specific risk assessment, you consider who is there, what their exposures are like, use the concentration data that are derived from the measurements, and then you estimate risk.
Does that answer? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela Garabagian, and I have two daughters, one in first grade and one in third. I guess regarding this particular subject, I'm wondering if, since the PCB has in fact leaked into the brick, could it be coming from that? And how is it even possible to get rid of that? And also, I'm wondering, while the air is circulating through... Being circulated through the schools, the windows are being opened, any possible dust from the outside caulking being disturbed? I know you said that was all removed, but what's happening to the articles inside the classroom? Are those removed? Are those encapsulated? What... How can you be sure that nothing has been contaminated?
Sure, I'll address... I've overseen a lot of these remediation projects, so I'll speak from my experience in doing this work, and also how it maybe applies to this particular case. And with respect to the brick, it's considered what's called a porous surface, because it can absorb material, in this case PCBs. And it's not unusual at all to have PCBs leach from the caulking into the surrounding brick or concrete or concrete block, whatever your building happens to be constructed of. And it can seep into that, anywhere from, you know, a quarter inch, a half inch, up to depths of two or three or four inches, depending on how porous the material is, the concentration of the PCBs, how much caulk was there, how long it's been there, a number of factors. What typically happens is that you go and you remove the caulk, and then there's some cleaning that's done, a solvent that's put on the brick to remove some of the surface contamination. And then, either one or two things happen after that, and that is, either the bricks are actually physically removed or cut out, which is extremely disruptive to the structure. It actually... It's a very disruptive process. Or it can be encapsulated. And what they do is apply a special epoxy sealant over the brick that actually seals in the PCBs, it keeps it from evaporating out of the brick. In this particular case, the bricks, we've done some limited sampling on some of the bricks next to the caulk. And I think the good news there is that the levels there are some of the lowest levels I've ever seen with respect to contamination of the brick. Most of the times, I'm seeing levels 10 to 100 times higher than we're finding here in the school. So, the good...
The number? Can you give the number in the sample?
They're around...
About the number of PCBs in the bricks?
In the bricks, right.
I think we're talking like single digits, parts per million, one, two, three, five parts per million, something on those, in that order, but we'll get the numbers for you. Versus what I'm used to seeing is in levels of 50, 100, or several thousand parts per million in the brick. And so, in this case, it appears, at least from what we've looked at so far, that the amount of leaching that's taken place into the brick is much more limited than we're used to. That said, we're still going to be cleaning the brick, and the brick's still going to be encapsulated, so it's still going to be treated that way. Because ultimately, at some point, when that brick gets disposed of, it does have to be treated in a certain fashion if it's above one part per million. And there are regulations that Kim can talk to about that. Your other question, I think, was about...
The objects in the classroom, within the classroom? While you're blowing the air around.
I'll let... Maybe Dave or...
Happy to talk about that. So, the levels in the classroom, and the objects in the classroom, what's the likelihood that they may be picking up PCBs that are being moved with the increased ventilation? Low is the answer.
But there is a chance.
Physically, there is a chance. Scientifically, there is a chance. As I was trying to describe earlier, these chemicals are always looking to find this happy medium. And that means trying to get concentrations, not equal everywhere, but equal as a function of the capacity of a material to hold them.
It's like Russian roulette.
No, I disagree. It's not that at all. PCBs are, again, are present everywhere in our environment. And thinking about how much is likely to settle or diffuse onto materials in the school is important. And the factors, there are many factors to consider. And chief... And the principle, the overarching principle here is the speed at which things happen. With the 8,000 cubic feet per minute ventilation that's planned with these four fans that we brought in beginning tomorrow, we're moving the air through this building very rapidly. We're expecting the whole... One volumes' worth of air inside the building to be replaced every hour. That's very quick compared to the rates at which PCBs migrate from one material to another.
So, you'll be leaving everything in the classrooms and not covering them, or...
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Everything will be left in the classrooms as are?
Yes. The plans right now are to leave the materials in the classroom as they are. And that's the type of activity that... That plan and action is exactly what we have done in other buildings. It's a standard in buildings that have been overseen by other groups, both private firms like ourselves and government agencies. And it's been shown to be effective. Oh, yeah. Let's talk about that, Matt.
Yeah, that's a good point. One of the things we're doing is, we're cleaning all the horizontal surfaces. So, in our experience, when these... If these particles settle out, they'll settle out on desktops, teachers' desks, tops of bookshelves, hard-to-clean areas, and those are all being cleaned as part of this process. So, we've done two very thorough cleanings of all the classrooms. So, all the surfaces we would expect to accumulate have been cleaned.
And you'll do them again? You'll do them again?
Yep. And we may even be taking wipe samples of these surfaces to assess how much is there.
You may take them, or you will?
We probably will.
Will you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want. I'm just...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just want to get back to the gentleman up here who asked about the levels in the brick. And quickly looking at the data, it looks like about between .1 and 4 parts per million, with most of the levels below 1 on the brick.
And the caulk itself?
The caulk was... Oh, caulk was quite... Was much higher than that.
20,000?
20,000 parts per million, which is pretty typical. We see in caulk, we usually find PCBs anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 parts per million, up to 100,000 or 150,000 parts per million. Because it was added there intentionally. It was part of the actual product when it was manufactured.
So, the caulk is gone now?
The caulk is gone, yes, but we... There's still some residue that we have to pull off the brick and seal, encapsulate the brick. That's right.
Matt's got a little more information on that.
All right. Yeah, we typically find it in the 5% to 10% range, or actually, I should say, 3% to 10% range is typically what we find.
I love the questions I'm going to ask the folks in the back. Forgive me for ignoring you. Jennifer, you've been great patient, so you're in the loop for the next question.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy to wait.
Please, I'm sorry to have ignored you earlier.
That's okay. We're pushy in the back. I'm Jill French. I'm one left at Esterbrook, third grader, and I wanted to start at Diamond. I almost don't want to say this, but I'm a little nervous about this whole thing. When I was 17, I was diagnosed with leukemia. I grew up in Arlington. I went through the Arlington Public School Systems, never found out what it was from. Freaking out about this. Freaking out. I worked for an environmental consulting firm, my first job out of college for five years. Worked in the Superfund sites in New England. Worked on Wells G&amp;H in Woburn. Love Canal. They moved some of the dirt from the site under a school built on it. Gee, why is there contamination over here? Oh, because they moved the dirt from Love Canal under a school. Not sure where... I know I'm sending this to a hysterical level. I know I'm like... I have a severely handicapped 17-year-old, genetic, nothing to do with me having leukemia, just luck of the draw. I have a two... I have three beautiful daughters, but my two younger daughters are perfectly healthy. Nothing wrong with them. I'm a single mom. I have to work. Dr. Ashes might be directed at you. I have to work. Don't have a choice. I am on a tight budget. My kids have to be in school. One's at extended, one's going to Diamond. I'm not sure what her after-school activities are going to be. She can't go on a bus, because we're too close to the school. We were on a tight corner, around Turnpike Road. They didn't put a sidewalk in when they put the... All right, you don't need to know all the dirty details. put the, the, all right, you don't need to know all the dirty details. My life is tough right now. I don't need this. I can't afford this. What am I going to do? What am I going to do? I don't want my third grader going through what I went through, not that it's going to happen, but I don't want to have to think about this. I want my kids, I, I moved to Lexington as a single mom, my kids are going to get a great education here, we're going to do great. My divorce I'll put behind me, this is going to be a great opportunity for my kids. I chose the Estabrook School District because it's a good community, and it is. Estabrook's an awesome community, I'm so happy I'm at Estabrook. It's a wonderful community, you guys are awesome. Clark, you people are great too, I'm sure. Estabrook is awesome. I want, I loved what my fifth grader got out of there, and I'm loving what Melanie's getting. I don't want my kids to go through what I went through. I don't know, I have no idea. You guys, I'm glad you got the contract, great what you guys are doing, I've worked with all you people in the past. I don't want my kid going through two years of chemotherapy at Children's Hospital, the Jimmy Fund Clinic. I may be bringing this to a hysterical level, but it needs to be addressed. I can't afford my kid not to go back to school, but I'm not, I don't feel comfortable. We're going to, just so you know, what's going to happen, I think over the weekend, if you saw the movie E.T., like level four contamination outfits, I'm guessing, right? Maybe? Plastic around everything? Because you guys don't want to catch anything? I'm just guessing. I'm not sending my eight-year-old daughter back on Tuesday. I want my kid to, Fisk School is Pissa! It's wicked nice! Harrington School is Pissa! Send my beautiful third grader to Harrington or Fisk! It's a big, huge school! I don't care if there's 30 kids in a classroom. I don't think my daughter deserves to go, they don't even have a cafeteria at Estabrook! When I showed my daughter Fisk, wow! Estabrook, I feel, is an awesome community. We deserve a building that's safe for us kids to be in. While you get this figured out, while you get this figured out, you guys figure it out! Our little children deserve a safe envi- Every child in the United States has a right to a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment that's a federal law for disabled children. Same law applies to all children in this, in this United States of America. Least restrictive environment, that to me right now is, is a restrictive environment. We don't know what the cause is, we don't know where the toxicity's coming from. I don't think all the things you're mitigating, I think it's great, keep at it, but I don't think by Tuesday, I don't feel comfortable. I had to send my kids to school today. I read all the emails last night while my mother was taking care of my kids because I have, but I had to go to work. I know I'm on a rant. I, I think I'm speaking for people here, that I just don't feel safe about sending my kid to school Tuesday, but I don't have a choice. I don't feel comfortable. She has to be in school on, on Tuesday, I don't have a choice. I love the teachers, I love everybody there, but I don't love this building right now. Estabrook community is the people there, not the building right now. Help us, Dr. Ash? Do you have a plan for Tuesday? Anyone? Do people agree? Thank you for mitigating and, and consulting. Keep it up, good work.
Thank you for sharing your story. You know, I, I, I wouldn't presume to fully understand your history, your story, your family, the issues. But I'm, I'm confident that what you said was heartfelt, and so thank you for sharing We're doing the best we can, and I, and I hope it, I hope it's enough. We didn't go looking for this problem.
But we shouldn't have sent the kids home, we shouldn't have started school yesterday, the day before, we should have started next week. Sorry.
We, by, by state law, we have to send children to school for 180 days. We have to send the school, children to school for 180 days.
And, and that's prior view?
That's, that's-
Whether it's helping, whether it's their responsibility-
No, no. This is state, this is a state regulation, we have to send children to school 180 days. If we had 15 snow days or a health disaster, the state's attitude is, you have to make up the days. Which means you have to ma, and you have to make up before July 1. I mean, ultimately, if it's a disaster, the Board of Education can make an exception, this isn't one of them. If, if we were to approach the state at this point, they would say, look, you've got a whole year ahead of you. So the view would be, as you begin to cancel school, you begin to work towards June 30. If there's any number of snow days, which are predictable, if we cancel schools too long, then we begin to cancel the school vacations, the December vacation, the February vacation, the April vacation. No. If-
That's a great, really, that's a thought. If that's still our children's health, Dr. Ash, we are, we are half out there. I'm just hoping that this priority, our children's health, their, their health is down, exactly.
Can all you guys in the back hear? Uh, sorry, it's kind of like a conversation-
I'm sorry, Dr. Ash.
Can you finish my answer?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. And I'll be, I'll be happy to sit down and do a lot of listening, because I want to do a lot of listening. If I genuinely believed, based on what the EPA has told me, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health has told me, the Health Department in town, the Board of Health, and any other expert, that the situation in the school is unsafe, we wouldn't even be having this meeting, I would close the school. I would absolutely do that. Your children's health is the most important thing to me. I'm a school superintendent, I know a lot about education. I'm not, I'm not a toxicologist, I'm, I don't, an expert on PCBs, so I rely on people who are experts in the field. So tonight, one of the reasons we wanted to assemble an expert panel is so that you could get your questions answered. I also wanted to assemble an advisory committee that includes parents and teachers and other stakeholders, so we can make judgments about what we think is best. So we're not just doing this by the numbers. The reason tonight is taking place is so that we can have a dialogue, to, to figure out what do we think is the appropriate next step. My view is, at the moment, that it made sense to close for tomorrow so we could fully ventilate the school and begin to get some more information. I'm still being told by people who I respect in the field, that these guideline numbers are numbers that are, to alert people to begin to look, to go forward. I have not heard anything from health professionals that these numbers are unsafe for children. I'm still listening, but that is what I'm hearing from the people who are here and other people I've talked with. And so I'm listening to what you have to say, because I re, I really want to make the best decision on behalf of children. And so let's keep the dialogue going, and, and I will certainly be listening some more.
I just want to know, Dr. Ash, if the levels were considered high enough for us to need abatement, to, to need to get rid of the caulking, and, and they were, how did you feel that it was okay to send our children through those doors when the levels had elevated as they had? It was already considered a danger as it was. I know that you're going to say the EPA told you it was fine, but as a human being, how can you look at those numbers and how can you say, huh, you know what, school's got to open, I, I don't want to stay late in school?
It's, it's not about that.
You, you did bring up vacations, I'm sorry.
No, no, you, the question I was asking is, if I canceled school, what would I do? What I, I'm just explaining what I have to do. The issue right now-
But you didn't give us a choice. You never gave us a choice. As parents, you did not give us the parental right that we have to protect our children, to make that choice. You withheld numbers from us.
I did.
You did. You had the level, levels, did you not have the levels before we started school? Did you not have the levels? I am told that you had the levels, that you knew that they spiked, you knew from Friday.
We did not, we did, Mr. Gardner, we waited for the full, complete set of numbers to come in. The full, complete set of numbers came in on Tuesday morning.
And before that, on Friday, they were higher?
We, we, we were getting various rooms, we waited-
But you knew they were higher?
We waited for the results to come in, but it's still, but, but even with the numbers, what I was being told, and I'm just trying to be as forthright, we were told with those numbers, it, the school was safe, opened the school, there was no, we specifically had, is the school safe to send children with these numbers? That's what I was told. So I'm acting on the information that I had.
As a human being? As a parent?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I would absolutely send my child to that school.
You really, that's, amazes me.
Absolutely would. You know, we have, we have houses in town who have, that were built before 1978, and, and as you pointed out, we have, in our ambient air, we have all kinds of things in our environment. There isn't a zero level in any environment. So the, the question though is, what's the right thing to do going forward? You know, and, and so I'm listening to what people are saying. What I'm being told is, the numbers we have now indicate that it is safe to send children to school, that's what I'm hearing, and that yet we should continue to go forward with the plan that we have in place.
My problem is trusting the decisions made by you and by whoever is making these decisions for our children. I, I don't know how to go forward trusting you. And what, yeah, what are our options? It, that's, exactly, this is the question on everybody's, she's right.
The question is to ask, what are the options?
Yeah, our, our children are not, my children will not re-enter this school. No, it's not, it's, yeah.
Hang on, hold on, hold on. Just a matter of order, just everybody can hear, it's a conversation-
Okay. Absolutely. So I feel that since the school is no longer deemed safe, you owe it to us as a superintendent to tell us where our kids can go that is safer, that has lower levels. I'm not going to allow my kids to be guinea pigs and find out 15 years from now that this was dangerous. Hell, no! I don't, I, my kids will never enter Estabrook again. So I want to know, I'll write you a letter if I need to, where are my kids going? Where are they going next week? They are not going back into Estabrook, I'll be damned.
I'm going to let the superintendent ask, answer the option question, and then I'm going to try and move the conversation to where a lot of questions are being asked, safety. So he's saying he's hearing from these experts, numbers. I haven't heard discussed yet, this critical question. What do these numbers mean? Is there a risk? You said it's been deemed safe, he says the experts all say, no, it hasn't-
The numbers, it is not safe, and I as a parent-
Okay, well, the guideline numbers doesn't say yes or no, but that's for you to interpret. But in any event, the question is, what are the options for parents at this point? And then can you all give us an idea of, I hear that New York City schools have been going through this for seven years, and they have, hang on a second, and they have higher levels, so can you tell us what you know about the actual safety of what you know about the school? But that's second. Does that, respect your questions? The question was the first of the option.
Ultimately, it's up to all of you to decide whether to send your children to school or not. My job is to decide whether to open school or not based on the information that's available to me, and I'm really trying to get information from the widest sources of people. If it, it's my judgment based on consistent information from experts in the field, the school is safe, then I owe it to, to the students in the school, to the parents in the school to open the school. I respect that others may disagree, I respect you may decide to keep your children home. That's your choice. If I make the decision based on a lot of discussion and listening to an advisory committee to keep the school open, then that's the place where you have to send your children to school. Now, if you don't, that's your choice, but there isn't an option to send your child to another school. The only option would be Estabrook.
Can you, can the folks here who have advised him so far about safety, your question, is it safe or not? Pardon my interrupting. Talk about, just, just to address the safety question, is it safe, not is it safe or not, but what you know about safety and the risks to kids? Because I think that's what I hear a lot of you guys, really, I don't mean to interrupt.
I, you know what, I, I don't trust what is being said, what is, what is safe and what is not. I don't trust that that is, I, I don't, that's, that doesn't mean anything to me at this point, I am sorry to say.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Who would you trust?
You know, Dr. Ash, I would have trusted you had you, had you given us all of the information you had upfront. I would, I would be able to trust you if you had stood before us and been honest enough to say, hey, look, the method we used failed. Not only did it fail to, to clean the air and make it better, it, it made the air worse. But guess what, I'm sending your kids, the, the levels are higher, but I'm sending them. If you had been honest-
That's what, that's what I believe the letter said yesterday.
I could trust you.
No, but that's what I believe the letter said yesterday. May I ask the question? Because I'm really sincere on the question.
I trust Sandra Truck.
No, but, but, put me aside, but is it-
Hang on one second.
I'm sorry, no, I, I have to interrupt on behalf of some of the other parents. There are a lot of us here that are ready to hear-
Let me just get this person's question answered first, and then-
Well, she's had a lot of time.
Deal the floor to others.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
There are a lot of us that want to hear what the panel has to say.
I'm sorry, my, my, my brief comment is, there, I think a lot of us are here to really receive information about the panel, about what they feel are safe levels in the school, what they, how they think we should move forward with this. And, I mean, I'm just kind of wondering what the school year's going to look for, like for my child. And I, so I'd like to hear more from the panel. I, I just think, for a lot of us, I think some of the conversation that's gone on could be held privately, and I think in this sort of public forum, it would be more helpful for the majority of us to really receive the most information possible tonight.
Is there a specific question?
I, I-
No, okay.
In regards to the levels, I mean, we, we know what the trigger is, the 100 for kindergarten, 300 for the rest of the kids. What would trigger a closing? Is that 15,000? And what is, if you went into my house, or in here, and you said the PCBs are everywhere, what would you expect? 20, 100? And also, in the school, we mainly seem to be talking about this 300 level, but I have a kindergartner where it's 100, and she's not just in that room every day, she's in the gym, she's down the corridor, she's going to eat lunch and all that. So should that be the threshold, the 100 level?
And along the same lines, what are the parameters that higher levels are acceptable, and for what duration? That's the biggest question you guys need to stand up and answer.
Thanks, yeah, that's where they're going. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try. This is not an easy subject, and, and I know that you folks are very concerned, and again, I, I just want to tell you, not the only school system, it's fortunate, believe it or not, that you identified an issue, and at least you have something to say, we can go forward. Because there's a lot of school systems out there that probably don't know what they're dealing with. You know, they go to school and they don't really realize the potential for having these types of contaminants, so that's a good thing, even though, you know, we are where we are. With respect to safe or not safe, we don't ever say, there's no way to ever say anything safe. What, the numbers that we have are screening numbers to say, at those concentrations and taking into account the sa, the adequate measures of safety that we've put in in developing those numbers, we believe that at or below those numbers, there won't be any harm. The question is, what happens above those numbers? Now, based on what we've, again, the safety measures that we've put in place, or the degree of safety factor, if we will, that we put in place in deriving those numbers, we have, we don't have any reason to believe at this time that short-term exposure at, at levels slightly above or somewhat above those screening levels will cause harm at this point. We don't have information to support that.
Kim, can you elaborate on short-term very quickly?
Well, short-term, we're look, PCB exposure is a chronic exposure, and you're looking at years' worth of exposure when you're talking about, when you're talking about PCB exposure. I understand, I understand, I truly do, but what you also consider is long-term exposure to the same concentration day in and day out. And so you look at, in, in this school, you have averages, you don't have the same concentration in each area, you also leave the school, you go outside to play, so you have to take a lot of things into consideration. And that was the reason I also talked about site-specific risk assessments. You know, not just looking at our screening numbers, but doing site-specific risk assessments where you take into account the people using the site and the activities they use it for. So that would be another more sophisticated step to get more definitive information, and And that's what was just talked about previously.
Could I, could I just add something to that risk assessment question?
Certainly, certainly.
Wendy, if you have a question, please.
Because Wendy, you mentioned risk assessments, and how that would identify sensitive sub-populations. Am I correct, that, at that stage, it's the risk assessment process that would identify the sub-sensitive populations? And are the numbers that you are using to, to make this analysis now about safety, what is the type of population that you're using to determine parameters for safety? And, well, wherever the numbers are coming from, okay, so there must be a baseline. So is the baseline based on somebody my size, somebody your size? Is it based on a sub-sensitive population, like little people?
It was. The, the numbers aren't just one number. They are based on, on age, and that would also take into account years of exposure. It also takes into account body weight. It takes into account a lot of that. So that's the reason when this, when Jennifer, or, I'm sorry, the other lady, was talking about the 100 nanograms and the 300, you heard her mention?
Yes.
Those are, are numbers that are the screening numbers, but they're based on different age groups.
And, so, but included in that is the consideration for the elementary population that we're dealing with?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The question was not answered. If, if, any, any, any place, 50 or 100?
What should be the measure in a normal? Sorry. I, I don't think the question was answered. The question was asked was, one of the questions asked was, what is a normal number? If our building was like every other building in this town, like Arrington or Fisk, what should the number look like?
Well, the, the, the quick answer to that is that when you have a building with, with no PCBs whatsoever, you're typically non-detect. But the, the issue with air is that the detection limit of the method is usually above the ambient levels we find outdoors. So if you, so, so if you say, less, like, 10, 10 nanograms per cubic meter, 20 nanograms, five, somewhere in that range, it depends, okay, on where you're located, in a city, in rural area, what have you. But I'll just take a slightly different angle to answering the question about safe. And really, the, what, what I would like to address here is, we, we did a very large study down at the University of Rhode Island, where they had, one of their large social science center buildings was found to have the very same problem that this school had, only it was much larger in issue. A lot of caulk, or PCBs on it. They literally had to remediate the whole building. But we had an opportunity there with the occupants of that building, who actually participated in a blood study. So not only do we have a tremendous amount of environmental measures of the type of caulk that was in the building, the levels in the caulk, but also what they were exposed to, we actually had samples of their blood for PCBs. So we were able to take, as we heard earlier, taking the two measures. You have a dose measure, and you have an exposure measure, and you can kind of put those together. And what we found was very interesting. What we found is that the time they spent in the building had absolutely nothing to do with the levels of PCBs found in their blood. It was related to age and gender. And sorry, guys, we have a higher risk of having PCBs in our blood than, than women. But that's, that's, that's actually, those are the two largest factors that explain the PCB levels we're finding in their blood. The other thing is, we compared the levels of PCBs found in their blood with the average level of PCBs found in the United States population. And it was virtually exactly identical. So, and the levels we found in that building were between 300 and about 800 nanograms per cubic meter. Exactly the levels we're talking about here at Esterbrook. So while, I don't want to say that that closes the case completely, it should provide some comfort that we actually did a very thorough exposure assessment. It took 18 months to do this work, along with these biological markers. And we did not find any difference in their blood that could be explained by time spent in the building, what floor they were on, how much they were exposed to at work. It had to do with their age and their gender. We also did have a few children in the study as well. Unfortunately, there were so few, you couldn't really do any kind of statistical calculations. But the, anecdotally, that, that was shaking out to be the same as, as the adults in this particular case.
Let me, hang on a second. Lot, no, 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 a lot of people have asked, like, 73 billion question, and they're all awesome. I just want to be fair, that's my job. Please, and then Jennifer, you get to go again, and then the young lady in the back.
Azita Garrawani, I'm a parent. Since you, since the caulk also had asbestos, has there been any exposure to, or testing of exposure to, the asbestos?
Yeah, I don't think we, were there any tests run for asbestos in there? I don't believe there was. Is that right? Just the bulk material itself, to determine whether, it had, I think, between 1% to 3%, 3% to 5% chrysotile asbestos, which is what's fairly commonly found in caulk. And again, it's a material, that's what I said earlier, is non-friable. And that, what that means is, it's very hard to make the asbestos come out of the material and get airborne. And clearly, the caulk just being in there, it's not going to create any exposure whatsoever. It's when you remove it, you have to use certain precautions, which were used here, to make sure that you don't release the material to the environment.
So the erosion of the caulk, or the degradation of the caulk wouldn't bleach any asbestos out?
No, no, even, to be quite honest, even in schools where you have what we call friable material, which would be like pipe insulation, unless it's really severely damaged, you really can't see it in the air. It's only when it's really disturbed, someone goes in to rip it out, that's when you find it in the air.
Okay, I have a, a sort of a multi-part question about some of the actual air sampling dates and the data we've been given. I, Lisa was nice enough to talk to me yesterday on the phone, and one of the things that you, that you mentioned, and that I had been concerned about a parent, as a parent, and sort of gets to this idea of friable, is, you know, I understand, fine, it's in the air, it's in these levels, they're everywhere, but when you disturb it, I, I had thought, and it seemed like Lisa might, may have suggested this, but correct me if I'm wrong, that when you disturb it, you can get a spike, for presumably the asbestos, and also apparently the PCBs. When I spoke to Lisa, you said that there had been a spike in the data. So I'm wondering, was that spike reflected in the data that we were distributed yesterday afternoon, or was it a different set of data? And how long do we expect the spike to last, if it was as a result of even wiping the inside caulk before encapsulating it, whatever was done? And also, that, it was mentioned that the next round of air sampling results are going to be, I believe it was said, available next Thursday, which is when, so when is the data, the sampling going to be collected for the results that will be next Thursday? Is it going to be collected, or has it already been collected? Is it going to be collected after the air is flushed? And if that were the case, I would assume the spike would be gone. But, so I guess, first of all, is the data that that was distributed yesterday reflective of the spike that you mentioned, Lisa?
The, the one spike we're talking about was the original 1,800 nanogram in Room 6. And just as a point of clarification, when I'm talking about a spike, we have seen in past, when you do removals, if you weigh of contaminated substrates, not so much just pulling out caulk, because it's generally pretty pliable, and you don't create a lot of dust on, on these materials, because they're really elastic. So a lot of times, they'll just come out, you know, right in one big piece, and there's not a lot of dust generation. But we have had it where if you had to do building removal, like the substrates we were talking about, the bricks, a lot of times, if you do remove those, you can create very fine dust. And sometimes the numbers will slightly go up, but they do come back down. And that was one of the things they thought they saw in the New York school, post, post-remediation of some of that work, that maybe they did get that short-term spike, but the numbers were coming back down. But then they also identified another source. So there's a little difference between just the caulk removal, and I want you to just understand that the caulk they removed was an exterior application, not an interior. And the interior of the window was plastic, aside from, was plastic on the inside, so that would have also facilitated anything getting into the indoor air.
So there was plastic on the inside, and they, you encapsulated it from the outside reaching in?
I think it was on the inside. I want you to talk a bit, a little about how you did the removal of the caulk. I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe it was, it was definitely sealed. I'm not sure if it was plastic or caulk, but.
What we did was, before we removed the outside, we took bond breaker tape, we took bond breaker tape, and we sealed all of the windows really well. Then we took a wipe sample of each of those surfaces, and we had a very strict guideline of one microgram per 100 square centimeters, which is very low level. All 18 of those samples passed before we did our air sampling. So we know that we got a good seal, and we cleaned all those surfaces really well.
What you guys talked about, what the second question was, which is, so there's this big ventilation coming in, and then there was what test?
Well, I'm wondering, so it has, yeah, it sounded, it seemed like people were nodding their heads that the round of results that will come next Thursday, that date, that sampling will happen on presumably Monday or Tuesday, after the air is flushed many, many times out of the building. And I guess, is that true? That's what?
That is indeed true. The ventilation is scheduled, the enhanced ventilation is scheduled to begin tomorrow. It continue into Friday. During that time, we will, we will begin this additional inspection of, of the school, looking for suspect materials and other potential indoor, or potential indoor sources. The plan for the next round of air sampling is that it will take place on Sunday and/or Monday, depending on what we learn as we go through the next two days.
Okay.
Either way, does.
Happy Labor Day, Matt.
Pardon?
Yeah, Happy Labor Day.
Yeah, Matt was saying, most Labor Days for us, this is what happens. And either if we sample on Sunday, or Monday, or both, it doesn't affect the delivery date of the results, because the labs don't open until Tuesday, and it's at that point that they can begin to process the samples.
And has there been any other air sampling done this week? Or nothing since the results that came in yesterday?
There has been no other air sampling, so all of the air sampling results that we have, you have.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kim, there was a question about the Tuesday and Wednesday, and you had just talked about returning to school Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay.
And there was just a question about, you had just mentioned something about short-term, and the level of exposure taking long-term. Would that help?
Just, just because of the PCBs, we know that, because of, of the way they react, that they're really a longer-term exposure. When we do risk assessment, we look at like 30 and 35-year exposure timeframes. That's really what we look at when we're talking long-term. Short-term, I, I think generally it's less than a year or so, and, and help me if I'm right on the toxicology piece and the risk assessment. It's even longer than a year. Yeah. She said it's, it's sometimes longer than a year for short, when you consider short-term exposure.
Sure. I feel like there's a disconnect tonight between the, the science and the discussion about methodology, and discussion of future risk, and the sense that we should be, as parents, a lot calmer about this. You all seem quite calm, and I, I understand there's a lot of science around measuring PCBs, and sometimes I feel like we're listening to kind of a how-to about remediation, and I hope I never have to face it in my own home. But I would like to know whether the medical science has been developed or performed that could reassure me that my child, who spent six years at Esterbrook, and who is now at Diamond, and my daughter, who is in fourth grade, is not at a significantly greater risk for cancer, immune disorders, endocrine problems, and the incredible miasma of other diseases that are associated with PCB exposure. This is sort of a follow-up to the environmental health discussion about blood sampling. I mean, I'm, I'm interested in the building and levels in the building, but I want to know specifically, has the work been done that can reassure all of us that the amounts that our children might have either inhaled, ingested, or somehow absorbed into their bodies, not created a, a potential for an epidemiological hotspot of Lexington graduates 10 years down the road, or 15 years down the road?
Start, start by, by saying that, like, like you, I, I am concerned, so that, share your, your concern, as, I, I myself am a father of three children. One is in elementary school in Newton, same vintage, was Esterbrook. I think about that school a lot, wondering what, what levels may be. But I, I, so it gives me concern, but I'm not fearful. And the reason I, I'm not fearful is because I am aware and, and in-depth in the scientific knowledge that exists about this issue today. As Kevin pointed out, we know from the study that our firm did in conjunction with some of Wendy's colleagues at BU, Dick Clapp, I think was the, Lou Pepper, we, we learned there that we could not find a relationship between the blood levels and the occupancy of the building. And that was assuring to us. And the, the reason why that was assuring is that the human epidemiology studies that exist in the scientific literature, the studies where they ask, is there a relationship between exposure to PCBs, controlling for other factors that might influence, and some outcome, there, most of them are based on exposure measures that, where you quantify the levels in the blood. So if we don't see a relationship with occupancy of a building and levels in the blood, that, that's assuring. We also know, looking across the literature more broadly, you can find studies in, of, in Europe, in Germany in particular, where, but Germany's full of buildings with PCB caulk in, built in the same era. And in schools with air concentrations in, in Germany that are in the same range, as have been measured, that we have measured in Esterbrook, blood samples have been collected from teachers in those schools. And what those investigators have found in those schools, they, they don't see a relationship, they don't see a difference in the, in the total concentrations of PCBs in the blood of those teachers compared to a reference population, German national averages. So that's assuring to me. And that's for the schools that have comparable concentrations to Esterbrook. As, as I believe Kim said, there is no absolute safe, but we can, but that said, we know a lot about PCBs. And I'm not saying us, I'm saying society, scientists, health scientists know a lot about the topic. We don't know everything. There's a lot to be learned, but we do know a lot. And that information, when we put it in the context of what we learned about Esterbrook, to me, is, induces concern, but not fear or alarm.
Frank Kaleria, I have two, two boys at Esterbrook. Ms. Tisa, regarding the screening numbers, safety factor, whether it's mechanical engineering, structural engineering, there's always safety factors in order to protect the public, as well as the engineers themselves. But those are also based on a datum point, which is, in some instances, the structural engineering of a building, it's engineered to be X amount higher than a total collapse. There has to be some factor by which, for instance, the 100 and 300 numbers have been reached. So you've got a 100, and you've got a 300 number, then you have the maximums for that contaminant. What is the factor, the up pushed, the risen factor, to make it more conservative, when the EPA determines and drops it down to say, okay, we want to be in this general neighborhood, but here's where it started. Here's where we absolutely say, we need to notice, we, we need to determine the safety from this point up here, and bring it down to there. Two, two times, three times, like, that's kind of the answer.
No, I, I'm going to be clear. I think from the, I actually was on the phone all day today, trying to get information out of the schools in New York, as well as EPA headquarters, to try to answer this question for you, or to, to provide some, some additional information, if you will. And the, they never, the, the way they came up with the numbers, and I, I was getting different information based on people who hadn't done the work, the, the screening level work. But I believe they told me, and I don't swear by anything, but it was like a factor of 3 to 100 times uncertainty factors built in. Am I right on that? Is that right, Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or 3 to 300, something like, degree of certainty factor?
Yeah, the toxicity value that the calculations are based on, this RFD, is, in the literature, it's a factor of 300. So, because it's based on animal data, it's not based on human data. We don't, so what they do is, they look for, and the toxicologists can speak more eloquently on this than I can, but what they do is, they look for the lowest level at which they can find a proven effect. So in other words, statistically, more animals had this effect that were exposed at some level versus animals who weren't. And that, they look for the lowest level they can find, and, and then that becomes the benchmark level. And then what they do is, they apply safety factors, just as you described, as they do in engineering, they applied it in toxicology. But it has to do with extrapolating from one species to another species. It has to do with, do we find what they call a no observed effect level, or was it a lowest observed effect level? So, in other words, in this particular study, I believe they had a low, the lowest observed, in other words, there was no level at which they had an exposure where no effect was seen. So what they do is, they apply a safety factor to that, and they, and they, and they multiply those factors together. And when you do that, in this particular case, you have a factor of 300.
So it's a 300 safety factor down to get into the general neighborhood of the 300 and 100.
That, that's for the, for the toxological piece. There's also exposure factors that, that filter into this as well. There's two components.
Which draw back to that.
Pardon?
Which draw back to that. Which, which feed back into the 100.
Right, right, ultimately, and then you get a number from that, yes.
Okay.
I believe, looking at it, most of that is actually.
Take a minute, second. If you'd like to add to the conversation on this point, please.
Hi, I'm Harold Pace, and I have two kindergartners in Esterbrook. Just a quick comment there. I did a little bit of research, I'm not an expert in this, but what I could see, most of that 300 is actually due to uncertainties in the science behind it, and the translations from the animal studies and the various different types of PCBs, and not just a safety factor. So I think there's some safety factor in there, but it's still, it's mostly uncertainty in terms of what the actual effects are and how much they're going to be. So it sounds just great to have a factor of 300, and in which case I'd be singing hallelujah and going home, but it's not, as far as I can tell, and as far as I can tell, because it's cumulative, because it is, you know, it builds up and it doesn't basically eliminate, we talk short term, we talk long term, there are studies that I found of animals that as short as a week, they had effects. Now, those a week were much higher dosages than what we have here, but short term is, can be fairly short. The challenge with long term is, most of the studies, at least in humans, were in adults. In adults, if I take a good fraction of my age, I'm talking decades. If I take a good fraction of my kindergarten's age, I'm not talking very long. And if we talk of dosages, and I'm just pulling from the EPA ones here, of about 100, which is five to seven times lower than, sorry, the measured ones were five to seven times higher than what that dosage was, that means that they're getting potentially weeks or multiple weeks of exposure for every day that they're in kindergarten, which means I'm not going to worry for a day or two, but I'm going to worry if this goes on for more than a week. Because at that point, they're starting to get, you know, months and years of exposure pretty quickly, especially for their age. And I don't, you know, it has developmental effects, it has, you know, all kinds of things as well as cancer effects. So I appreciate that we don't necessarily have to, you know, close school today, but I, you know, given that the facts, that those, the average measurement across, and I really appreciate setting out those numbers, it was very helpful, it provided a lot of information, certainly at the trust level that people are working on this. But the average numbers being the same or higher tell me PCBs in the caulk may be a factor, but they're not much of a factor, and ventilation, at least in what I could find, is great for an intermediate or kind of temporary solution, but it's not a long term solution. So there is something else there, from what I can tell. There's going to have to be something else that solves that. It concerns me that the testing time cycle is on the order of several days to a week, so we can't really, any test we're going to do, we're going to have another week before we find out how effective it is. Any remediation we do, once you get the contracts and everything else, you're going to have another week before you find out how effective it is. I don't know how we're going to get a solution and know that we have a solution before the end of September. Unless we get really lucky, and the test done this weekend identifies something, and it gets taken out this weekend, and miraculously it's done, there's probably going to be iteration. And I, it bothers me, I guess, that we, well, it concerns me as an adult, as a parent, that my kindergarten is getting, you know, weeks of exposure every day they go to school. And I'm not, you know, they may go one or more, two more days, but if we can't find something, I'm going to have to find some other solution besides public school in Esterbrook. And I would really hope that the school board is finding or looking at some other solution so that we can, even if it's for a limited amount of time, trailers, or another school, other buildings, it is disruptive, it costs money, but this is cumulative. This is not something where they get the exposure and then a month later it's gone. So I'm not comfortable building up an exposure that is over the guidelines, given that there's still uncertainty in what those guidelines really are. So, I meant to phrase it as such.
I wasn't finished. I wasn't finished.
Does anybody want to address that, or is it, I mean, it's a concern, obviously, I didn't.
I actually, yeah, I'd like to add a little bit, I think, to what Dr. McIntosh presented about the question about medical science and what we know and what we don't know. The studies that he refers to, and what we do know, we certainly know things about very high concentrations, and those are the effects that we would see and we would be able to measure. We're not there. The newer epidemiological data, which are the human data that are associated with exposure that are measured in blood, like Dr. McIntosh spoke about, are just now beginning to allow us to understand some of the more subtle effects that we're concerned about in our children. When we talk about those effects, though, the majority, overwhelming majority of the dose, of the dose of PCBs comes from food. And so what the relative contribution is from the air, we are very uncertain about. But what we do know is that our overall exposure is coming from food, and we are adding to this. And when EPA developed those levels, this was the first time, I think, that EPA looked at what we call cumulative exposure. And that's extremely important, because always in the past, we had looked at risks due to single exposures in single places. This is extremely powerful, and so that screening number, the numbers that we're referring to, are incorporating, trying to incorporate our child's total exposure. And so this is, we call it sort of a risk cup, and this portion that's coming from the air in the schools is one portion, one, and I will say, one small piece of the pie. Was it 10%, 5% was the relative contribution, something like that? And I, please don't quote me on those numbers, but EPA can get them to you. So it's a small, it's a portion. No one can say for certain that it is not tipping that risk cup over. Can't say that. What we can say is that those numbers were derived, where was the gentleman, with uncertain, those are uncertainty factors. In 1965, we called them safety factors. In 2000, we called them safety factors, they're uncertainty. And what that means is that we don't know whether the monkey is more or less sensitive than the human. That's what that means. It also means that that dose, that we, that effect that we measured, is that the right dose, is that the right effect to be measuring in people? Those data are now accumulating. Those are the studies that are being done in places like New Bedford, in birth cohorts, you know, in very large university-based studies. And what we're seeing is that the source of the PCBs in those cohorts, in those mothers and in those kids that are followed four years, seven years, now, I think, up to 12 and 14 years, those PCBs appear to be the ones that were derived from the food. Again, what does that mean? It means that we have these large exposures to PCBs. There's a contribution from this school. It's unacceptable that we continue with this exposure. But will it cause us, our children, to present with, you know, immune system effects, reproductive effects?
Can I just add that this is all relatively new?
Yes, this is.
I'm not in New York soon, the EPA, if I'm not right, this chronology didn't start ticking until two or three years ago, and...
Oh, no, no. Let me just clarify one thing. PCBs, as Dr. Ma-
We were talking, talking about-
No, no, I'm going to, PCBs were put in these products a long time ago. Now, EPA has known about these for a long, long time, and we've talked about PCBs in these materials. It originally started when we found a lot on Navy ships, and a lot of products on Navy ships. But it's not like we didn't know about them. I think what's happening here is, we might not have understood the extent upon which they were used in these particular products. I mean, we're talking everything from caulk to paints to adhesives. You look on the website, you will see lists of products that PCBs were used in. At the time, they were great because they held up well. They didn't go anywhere, and that's one of the issues you're dealing with, because they don't degrade, they stay around for a long time. But I think what originally happened is we're starting to see a lot of weatherization, window replacement, building demolition. And so now people are starting to understand that, and sampling for these particular products, sampling for PCBs in these products, and that's why we're hearing more and more about it, because of where we are with respect to timing, on where the buildings are with renovations, demolitions, et cetera. So while we've known about it, I think the bottom line is, we didn't realize somewhat where they might have all been used. You can look on the website and see the concentrations and the percentages of PCBs that were put in these products. And while they were only small percentages, it only takes a little bit to go a long way. And that's why we're just seeing it all over the place.
Excuse me, there are tons of you waiting. A brief follow up, and then the gentleman in the back, and the young lady over here.
For the engineers, your past experience, if you've had one similar, has there been a case in which you never discovered where the additional contaminants came from, or was it the case that you simply chased and chased and chased and found it? One question for Dr. Ash. With regard to the EPA recommendations, the cabinet unit heater's being cleaned, the improved ventilation, the frequency to reduce dust, the dust, using wet cloths rather than dry, having the unit heaters, the standard practice is to change the filters twice a year. Once a month, they're supposed to be checked, and the coils are supposed to be cleaned. That's standard procedure. I don't know a school in the world that actually does that, but we have every right to insist that that be done immediately and ongoing forward. So can we get your assurance that you will look into that?
Well, we are working with EH&amp;E on the protocol, on what needs to be cleaned, on what frequency. And again, that's part of the plan that gets submitted to EPA and gets approved, or, right now, we've got an interim plan, but there'll be a final plan. We have a PM program on changing filters, cleaning coils.
That includes the maintenance, ongoing.
Yeah, ongoing maintenance, and determining where process we go through and what we determine to be the causes of this situation, we will put the remedies in place. I don't want to commit to a specific remedy now that may not have anything to do with it. Are you suggesting do the coil cleaning monthly?
Sure.
If that has nothing to do with it, we don't want to commit now to doing that monthly. But we are going to be in an ongoing operations and maintenance plan at the outcome. If we get to the outcome we all want to be at, where the school is below the guideline levels, then there will be ongoing operations, maintenance steps to both maintain that level and then do air sampling to make sure that we're continuing to see the air sample levels that we want. So as we work through the process and identify the things that are the issue, we'll work with our specialists here on how to eliminate them and then how to maintain them going forward.
And then just the engineers' ongoing chasing of...
No, we've always found the sources of PCBs, and the levels have always been reduced. We've never not had a case where we went to the building, couldn't find it, and the levels remain the same.
Gentleman in the back, let me just say, I apologize to you personally, anybody else, my natural normal way of joking is in all of disrespect, it's a very serious issue, and I don't mean disrespect, it just comes down to that, it's made in my day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jack Fuji, I have two children at Esterbrook. Couple of quick points. I appreciate the science. It sounds like it's fluid, and I don't think I'm going to educate the scientists as to what's going on. One of the comments about being in the food, and that's one of the primary drivers of where PCBs are in our children, I just don't accept the fact that we're going to work very hard to keep our children healthy, feeding them organic, doing whatever we can do, and then allow you to add more poisons into their body. So we're working very hard, that's what we're asking of you. Number two, Dr. Ash, I think what we're talking about in Mr. Garded is a trust level, not that you want to see our children sick. It's a trust level that your judgment is sound and thought out. We were here two years ago with the asbestos boiler at Esterbrook, one week before school, and you tried to move that to save money, convert the gas, and we had to fight that to have it put off until the beginning of the summer in the next year. So it's your judgment problem that we're having, and that's a trait, gentlemen, that we're going to have the need to change, one way or the other. Either you're learning from these experiences, or we're going to have to go in a different direction with our leadership in this town. I appreciate the curriculum development, but it's also the health and well-being of our children and their health, and you have to be able to engage the families with regard to that. And so I think it's a lack of judgment with the forethought of the contingency of what if. You have to ask the question, what if? So what if Thursday, something happens? I haven't heard that, Dr. Ash. What if it remains the same, and you finally become, Thursday, uncomfortable with the levels, you and your consultants? What do we do? That's a question right now for you.
I'm glad you mentioned the...
I understand, Jack White, and that was a much bigger question, that you're forming this advisory committee come Thursday.
Hang on a second. Just so that the people can back in here.
You're forming this advisory committee on Thursday. So come Thursday, if you have a majority of that committee say to you, we want this school closed. Are you prepared to do that?
I'm prepared to really listen. I'm glad you mentioned, I'm glad you mentioned the issue two years ago. The end result was, that the decision was made not to go forward. That was the ultimate judgment.
School board had a lot to do with that.
Well, it's the collective. I mean, the school board, yes, had a lot to do with it, absolutely.
And we had our...
Well, absolutely.
Absolutely. And I... That's the point.
Well, I'm trying to respond to the issue of judgment. I can't promise you perfect judgment. I can promise you really being careful and deliberative and trying to bring experts in, to bring the community in, and to make the best judgment. In that particular case, the decision was made not to go forward. The community was listened to. In spite of the report from Universal Engineering and other experts who were there, the decision was made not to go forward. So moving forward to this particular case, what we didn't do in that case, is this case, I want to bring the community, the teachers in, community and experts in to have a dialogue. I learned a long time ago, trying not to speculate on every single possibility that might come out, because a lot's going to happen between now and next week. There's going to be an investigation throughout the building, to find, can they find the source? There's going to be a change of the air in the building, there's going to be further tests, data, there's going to be a lot more thought that's going to go into this between now and a week from now, and I'm sure on Google Groups and a whole lot of other groups, a whole lot of other discussions. Ultimately, you know, people make decisions based on a lot of information, but this is not going to be, I'm just sitting at home making a decision. And, you know, the bottom line is, I won't open school if I think it's unsafe. I have a duty to educate children. Somewhere in there, someone makes a judgment, and I'm going to do my best.
If you, sorry, if you made that decision to close the school, what is, where would our children go? That has to be in the forefront somewhere, because that is a possibility that the school could close. What is Plan B?
We have to come up, that's a discussion we've just begun to have. There aren't, there's nothing obvious. We have no surplus space in any of our elementary schools. So we're putting our heads together to try to wrestle with that issue. We don't happen to have just an empty school sitting in town that we could reopen and move students into. And when I share the enrollment numbers with the school committee next week, you'll see that the numbers are up significantly. In fact, I'll just foreshadow, the enrollment for the school system is up approximately 250 students from last year. We've had a very dramatic increase in enrollment, which is why some of our schools are absolutely at capacity right now. So this is not going to be an easy issue to solve. We're going to have to really sort of think about this.
Dr. Ash, you also said that it's going to be the parent's choice to send the children or not.
It always is. Every single day of the week.
And we have 180 days. So let's, will you and the school committee give us options to self-educate our children until Thursday? Are my children going to pay the price for a week's loss of school at the end, if I keep them out?
No child is going to be punished as a result of keeping children home. We're going to work, if a parent decides to keep a child home, we're going to, we're going to work with the parent to figure out what to do. I mean, if a parent ultimately decided to take a child off of school for the whole year, that's, there's a whole route for that. It's called homeschooling, which is very unusual. But to answer your question directly, in terms of, I think, the intent you're asking, the answer is, of course, we're going to work with parents. I don't know what that would look like, and we have, and I'll have to talk to Mrs. Track
they look at non-conventional space to educate our children, such as this hall, and do some very creative thinking for the next week, 10 days, month, maybe the whole year, regarding this space, hotel space, corporations lending out conference rooms? Would they consider that?
We have to consider what our options are.
Would you do that within the next week?
Well, we're going to start looking at the issue. I mean, there are very specific code requirements of where you can put a school. It's not simply you can just take a hotel room in a hotel and do that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kamala Sobaker, I have a son at Estabrook. And I have a few things. One is, of course, the emotional part, which is that it's very hard, not that I would wish it on any other school in Lexington, but it's hard to think that we have to make that decision to send our child into what is potentially an unsafe situation. And I don't mean like unsafe, the ceiling's going to fall in, but I mean, I think it's come out tonight that nobody really knows. And I'm hearing a little bit of a disconnect that was said, that, you know, that there's a study done that says that occupancy is not related to PCB levels in the blood, and yet we are remediating because of occupancy. And that is what the EPA guidelines are set because of occupancy. So I don't necessarily need a whole answer about that, because I don't know if anyone understands that, but that is just something that came out tonight that I think is really odd. And I think, you know, there was a statement made about risk assessment, which I don't pretend to understand, I'm not a scientist. But I think bottom line, what I find disturbing is, one, having to think every day, you know, I have a daughter who's in seventh grade. She already went through it. What's done is done. Her body is what it is. But I have to consciously say, I'm going to send my son into this situation every day, and with no knowledge or feeling that there's an end point in sight, that we may be sitting here in December and saying, we tried this, we tried this, we tried this, and as the other gentleman mentioned, it's not one day. I mean, my son's in third grade, he's already been there for three years. Another two days is probably not going to make a difference. In fact, if we had had five snow days last winter, he would have been there the five days. It's not knowing, and I need to hear from somebody before I send my kid back, how do I, as a parent, when I have a child relying on me to understand this, to send my kid back? And I totally appreciate everything I'd rather know than not know. I'd rather, you know, as Mrs. Trock said, I think it's absolutely right, I'd rather have this stuff out than not dealing with it. So I completely appreciate that, whether it was done one week before school, or one day before school, or ongoing. But how do we know? How do we, as parents, figure out, okay, it's, you know, October, and this has been going on too long? And it is, Dr. Ash, extremely difficult to look at five other elementary schools and say, hmm, because of where I bought my house, my kid now is being sent into this, and I would like any kind of help that you could offer to that end.
Actually, to add to that, I just want to say, this is not an Estabrook problem.
Would you join my question?
This is not an Estabrook problem, this is a Lexington problem, okay? The question is not whether or not the Estabrook students should be going home or coming to. The question to you, Dr. Ash, is where do I put those five extra seats in every classroom that's in Bridge, and in Harrington, and in Fisk, and every other elementary school that we have in this town? Because everybody shares this discomfort. Every, no, everybody, I mean, the parents of Fisk. Hold on a second.
I just want to say, I agree with you.
The parents that are involved here, all right, are going to feel a lot of pain. The parents at Fisk need to feel a lot of pain. Everybody in this town has got kids in elementary school. That's where my kids are going to go. Now, I've been listening very patiently to you tell us that, well, this is not an option, that's not an option. When the doc, I believe you're, I apologize, Higra Bernays was speaking very eloquently on what's going on with the science. We're all sitting here thinking the same thing. Science is great, okay? Some of us failed it, some of us did very well. But the bottom line is, within everything that she says, she still said it was an unacceptable risk. There is a risk here that we don't want to expose our kids to. Now, whether you like it or not, in addition to all of the magic that you're trying to do here with $150,000 worth of studies that don't really answer the key question, is you've got to get together with the school board, who should have been here tonight, and they have to put pencil to paper, and there's got to be a Plan B, because Plan A is not, how many people think Plan A is going to work? By Sunday. It hasn't worked yet, and we haven't had communication. Somebody's got to put pencil to paper and say, the fabricant kid is going to go to Bridge on Monday, or Tuesday, or whatever it is. And the Garibigian kid is going to go to, you know, Harrington or whatever. We also have extra space, we've got space here, you can put teachers in buildings around. Get somebody, Mr. Building Person, get somebody to look at where the available space is in Lexington. And do that, and get a plan together, and talk to the buses, and find out where the routes are going to be and where people are going to go. We met here three years ago to try to figure out where the redistribution of students was going to be generally, when they were thinking of breaking up various different places in town, and my kid was going to now not go to Estabrook, he was going to go to Bridge or whatever else, all right? Whatever that plan was, we know you're capable of doing it. 250 extra students or not. This is everybody's pain. Put pencil to paper and get it done.
I just want to make sure, my name is Ben Estee, and I have a child at Estabrook. Just to make sure I understand what's been said tonight. So, Dr. Ash, you said you're going to make a decision based on the advice of experts. You've established and brought together a panel of experts, and what I've heard tonight is, at best, the science is uncertain, or it's undone. The studies that are done were not done on children. That's what I heard. It was, we didn't have a sample to know the data. So how can you possibly make a decision when you have either uncertain data to advise you, or unproven or undone data? I don't know how that's going to happen. How can you place trust? You're going to come back to your science ability, which you admitted you didn't have, so you'll turn to the experts? We don't have the data on children. That's the problem. Second question, looking back, I'm relatively new to the town, and I want to make sure I understood what Mr. Goddard said. I understood you saw an article in The Globe about PCBs. Is that what you said? It doesn't give me confidence that we learn about hazardous waste from the local newspaper. Why aren't we getting advice from the experts, from EPA, that you're reading on a regular basis, or Mr. Cody is reading? We shouldn't have to wait till our town officials discover about hazardous waste in the local paper. That's not a way to feel trusted about the system. On top of that, I didn't understand, in the chronology, what happened between September and May of this year. We're suddenly up against the wall as school's starting, but what, maybe you could fill us in, what happened in eight months that we weren't moving with all speed to take this with the utmost concern? So if you could answer maybe that chronology, and, Dr. Ash, if you could explain how you can make a decision without scientific evidence, that'd help.
Well, I think the, and what I was referenced to in the article in The Globe, is that's basically when the region learned about this issue. The EPA issued a press release on the issue, and it was through Kim Teas' office later that month. So actually, the Globe article came out before the EPA press release. So that's really when it was available. That's when the information was released to the public. We acted on it very quickly. I think if you look at communities around you, you would find that there's very little activity on this issue in communities around you. This community acted on it, took it serious, and we wanted, as well as members of the community asked us, to find out if we had an issue or not. You can always look at a timeline and say, yeah, that timeline could have been quicker. In a vacuum, everything is very quick, but there's multiple things going on in town. We assembled a group, we worked on this diligently, among other priorities in town, over the last year, and we came up with results. Our goal was to come up with results and find out if we had an issue or not. Yeah, we have an issue. That was, I believe, the intention of the EPA's guidelines. Now, the EPA is here, EPA is, and I'm not going to speak for EPA, but what I heard from EPA was that their intention of putting those guidelines out was to inform the public, if you have numbers in this region or higher, you should take action. Their guidelines were not such, if you have numbers in this region and higher, that you should close school. I'm not going to speak to that, that's not my field. But that's what I'm hearing tonight, is the press release from EPA was to inform the public that we should look at this issue, and we did. EPA's press release also said, if you have readings in this area, then you should look further and see if you can get those numbers down. We just got the results on August 9th, and we got measures in place to remove what we felt was the key contributors to this issue within three weeks, so that it could be done before school started. Not because we felt that the risk was such to the students that it had to be done before school started, but we felt that we could only effectively do the work without the students in the building. So that's why it was a priority to get that work done before the students were in the building, so that work could be effectively done. That was accomplished. We didn't get the results we wanted. Nobody wants to be here telling you, we didn't get the results we wanted. But we're taking actions, and we're acting on the information we have. We have the experts under contract, working for the town, who've done this successfully in the past, to help us be successful on this issue. So nobody's giving up, nobody's saying, oh, we can't do anything about this. We're going to get it, I'm very confident we're going to get it corrected with the advice of our experts. And we have other experts here to speak on that as well. But that's, in the chronology, you look backwards, say, yeah, years is a long time. A lot of things happened over that last year, and we're one of the few communities you will find in this area that's done anything on this issue since it was released from EPA.
I want to comment. Two things you've raised. The first is, the school committee is extremely interested in this issue. Yesterday, there was a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, because they put this topic on the agenda, and four school committee members attended that meeting, and some of you were at that meeting. So I don't want you to leave thinking that the school committee is not actively engaged. They're very much engaged. And tonight, we also have some school committee members here as individuals, not in behalf of the whole board. With respect to the second part of the question, which is, how do you make a decision with imperfect information? And I'm not trying to be flip, but that's the way the world works sometimes. God, I wish there was perfect information to make a decision. But in the end of the day, school's going to be open, school's not going to be open, maybe your idea, this is a town-wide problem, and students distributed across town, I mean, it's something where we need an awful lot of discussion and weigh the pros and the cons on this one. But I don't expect a week from now that you're going to, I mean, it'd be great, a week from now, the numbers come back, it's all perfect, the problem's over, and all of us go home and we're happy. We have to be prepared, that's not the case, and there'll be still questions that people are asking that we don't have answers to. But you still expect action, and responsible action, and that's the most that I can promise you, is that, you know, that some smart people are going to put their heads together and try to make the best judgment about where to go.
I just want to add that, there is, I'm sorry, get it on. I'm sorry, I'm just being a police. Save it and make sure it's there. Young ladies are waiting for half an hour.
My name is Beth Davenport, and I have a son in high school, who went through the whole school, from kindergarten all the way through, so I'm listening for the cumulative effects and worried about that to some extent. Pardon me, a lot. And then my daughter's in fifth grade, and I hear you talk about classroom number six, and I'm saying that she's in classroom number six. Anyway. But my question is coming from me being a non-scientist and looking for some concrete information. I'm hearing you talk about circulating the air and flushing the air, and that that is, sounds key. Am I correct, that that's key to mitigate the situation? Where does the air go, and where do all the PCBs go? So you're circulating it. Where's it going? Can, is anybody else worried about that here?
They...
Okay, they go outside to the playground where the kids play?
The air...
And then drops into the soil, or where's it go?
Well, the simple answer is, the air's going to go outside, and then the more complicated answer right after that is, it starts to mix with all of the other air outdoors, with the wind and the temperature changes, and it gets diluted very, very rapidly.
How rapidly?
Depends on the conditions for the day.
Days?
Oh, no, no, no. Seconds to minutes.
Seconds.
To minutes, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I think that was never made clear, and here, a big part of your plan is to flush it out, and, okay?
Yeah, it was not an intentional omission, and thank you for asking the question, so we could clarify that.
My other question is, you don't know exactly where the PCBs are coming from, it might not, you may never have found it, so you're doing all this flushing, might that spike the amount that's there, and our kids are supposed to go back on Tuesday?
It's a good question, interesting question, too. Highly unlikely that increasing the ventilation rate would actually increase the rate at which PCBs are going from solid, from some solid material into the air. It's highly unlikely that would happen. What is going to happen is that the concentration should go down with, the more air you put in, the lower the concentration, the lower the concentration should go. We saw that in room six, between the first round of sampling and the next round of sampling there. We have every reason to expect we'll see that again. But we need to identify, we need to determine if the source that appears to be present, based on the post-remediation, post-removal sampling, is some lingering effect from the caulking that was removed on the exterior, or if instead, there's some source indoors. And that's what we're going to begin doing tomorrow.
And a lot of this sounds like it's going to be unanswered for quite a while. I mean, we're not going to have definitive answers by Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday even. Thursday, you hope, but maybe not.
Can I just point out that Thursday is Rosh Hashanah, and there is no school? Okay. But you're having a meeting on Thursday on Rosh Hashanah, so parents who are Jewish might not be able to attend that meeting? Including you? So that is a problem. And I think, you know, we have a three-day week next week, we might consider it's three days, why not just close the school next week? I mean, maybe I'm being stupid, but it sounded like a good idea to me. And I do have a couple of questions, I don't want to go out of turn, but...
You're up.
Okay.
I think you're asking for a call.
The, and I'm Jamie Pratt, I've had a kid in Estabrook for the last 14 years. My current child is in third grade, and so we've got a couple more years ahead of us. And we love the Estabrook community also. I'm also a physician, I would not consider myself a scientist, but I am a physician. And I just, I've had more questions tonight than I've had answers. And I clearly understand that medicine is not a definite science, and that we don't know what PCBs are going to do in the future for our children. We just don't know that, and we have no way of knowing that. But I do think there's some misleading evidence here, is that we're saying PCBs don't go up in the blood in people who are exposed through air. But do I understand that PCP in the blood level is actually an accurate measurement of total body PCP toxicity? Because PCBs are lipophilic, meaning that most likely they're stored either in the liver or the fat or somewhere else. You want to answer?
Go ahead, yeah, we can chip in if you can.
You remember from your studies of pharmacology?
Can you hear it back?
That, yeah, you remember with your studies in pharmacology, that the behavior of medicine, drugs in the body, has to do with the behavior as the drugs go through the GI tract, into the liver, throughout, et cetera. And so you actually have a steady state relationship between the concentration in the storage depot, which for PCBs is fat, and the blood. So you're able to measure the blood, and it is a measure of what is in the fat.
Okay, so the levels might be accurate.
That we do know, but you're absolutely... But you're absolutely correct that when we measure PCBs in the blood, the ones that are rapidly removed or metabolized are out of the blood. And so you're correct that the measure of PCBs in blood may not be total PCBs, like everything, but it is a good measure of what's, the, the PCBs to which we are exposed.
Okay, so it's, it's an acute measure, but it's not a chronic measure, really?
It is a chronic measure. It is a chronic measure.
Okay.
It is measuring what is present in the body over, over time.
So does the EPA foresee a time when we're going to be measuring PCBs in our children's blood like we measure lead? Because I know that it also has neurotoxic effects and can affect IQ and that sort of thing.
It's hard to say what goes on at EPA headquarters. But I will tell you that this is a big subject matter in, in, in Washington, and it has invoked a lot of R and D that's currently ongoing at our Research Triangle Park to look at exposure and how, and effects. So it's new. I'm not going to say that we've got a lot under our belt at this point, but we are headed down that direction to try to figure out relationships and exposure for PCBs, and especially indoor air and caulking, et cetera. So we are headed there, but I'm not going to say we're there.
Okay. And the other major question I have is about the playground. I know that the PCB levels in the soil, at least if I understood the forms we were sent, are high. I, I don't know how high that is, I don't know what's going to be done about it, but I can tell you that Estabrook kids love to dig in the dirt. You know, my kids come home covered in dirt, they actually, they actually have these pieces of dirt they take out of the ground that they call chunkies. I don't know if any other Estabrook parents have heard of these, but they, they, they build things with these chunkies, which are big pieces of dirt. So my question would be, you know, are we doing something about the dirt? My older kids, boys, have already eaten it, so they're, they're, they're as dumb as they're going to get, hopefully. But the question is, you know, are we going to do anything about the dirt, and when are we going to do that, and how will that be measured? And then the last question is, are you going to take the measurements on the air right after you do the flushing, which will probably not be representative of what our kids are going to be breathing two days later? Or are you going to take serial measurements of the air?
Yeah, okay. Let's take an initial stab, and please remind me or any of us if we missed one of the questions, and, and we'll...
Okay. It's just two questions, dirt and air sampling.
Okay, just dirt, dirt and air. Okay, so the soil outside the building, we have begun to characterize PCB levels in, in that soil, and those concentrations and results are reflected in the communications that exist today, and they've been shared with Kim and her regulatory role at, at EPA. The concentrations in all of the samples except one were below a, a concentration that is, that would result in further action based on what EPA has established as actionable levels. How, yet, further characterization of the soil is planned, and we started making those plans this week, and those plans will be developed more fully in the coming days, and I, I don't know exactly when we're going to start, but I anticipate it should be either later this week or early next week. So we're continuing to look. And in terms of the, the science about PCBs in the soil, there have been studies of that. We've examined soil around buildings that we've helped property owners address in the past. There have been studies of that, that phenomenon by academic investigators, too, some local to, to our city. And what they generally show is that enrichment of PCBs in the soil can occur, doesn't always occur when there's window caulking that has PCBs, but it can occur. And when it does, it's generally very limited in scope, within the first three to six, maybe 10 feet of the, of going straight out from the wall. So we know a fair amount about that, and we're going to be looking and examining. If, I think that this, this notion of a site-specific risk assessment that has come up several times tonight is one that should be considered further. And in, in, when doing that, we should think about where the, the children spend time, in, in contact with the soil, with the, the chunkies or whatever else they might be doing, what other ones might be doing. That should be part of that analysis. So it's very informative to hear about that activity from you tonight. The, turning to the air sampling that will be done following the ventilation procedure, we will, we intend to follow a, a, a design that will allow us to test some hypotheses as we go along. But certainly, part of the design will be to conduct this sampling over this coming weekend, under conditions that are the same as they were in the prior sampling period, so we can make a valid comparison between the two. And that was with the, the windows were closed, and the central systems were running, and we had unit ventilators running. So there would definitely be, that will definitely be a component of the sampling. And, and we will allow time for the building to get back to the original conditions.
Just one more question that came up when you were talking about where the distribution of PCBs are. The unit ventilators take the air from right under the windows, am I correct? So is it possible that we're just pulling PCBs in from the dirt right outside the window?
Possible, but unlikely. What we've seen, it's an excellent question, we've seen the unit ventilators, well, it all depends how you think about it, right? I mean, PCBs are everywhere, so are they pulling in, are the unit ventilators pulling in PCBs? Sure. Is, is your box fan at home, or your air conditioner at home pulling in PCBs? Yeah. It's all about the levels. But I don't know, it's highly unlikely that's the source. We all, I think, talking with, with Kim and, and us here, in our experience, we believe that there is either a direct source inside the, the building, which would mean a material manufactured with PCBs, or a material that is, has a high affinity for PCBs and has absorbed them over time and is re-releasing. That's what we think.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Delphine Louie, I have two kids in Estabrook, and I have one comment and two questions. The first is, you can tell from the community that it will be the expectation that as you're searching for secondary sources of PCBs, that, you know, you don't, you don't leave any stone unturned, and that we're just hoping, this is all excruciating for all of us to be here and talking about, and it's, so please, just do it once and do it right. Because I actually, I for one have faith that this might work. Okay, so I just thought I'd say that. But I also have a question about the, we talked about removing the exterior caulk, but what, what did you do for the interior caulk? It was something like covering it, and I don't really understand that. Is it effective? How long is it effective? And, and going down the line, will there be surveillance? Are we going, I mean, is, is this going to work for the life of Estabrook? Or are we going to have to check every six months? And that, those are my questions.
Yeah, what was done with the, the, I'll call it what they call glazing compound, which is the material that actually holds the window pane in the window frame. We had two basic components. We had the frame caulk, which is on the outside, that had the asbestos in it, that was removed from the outside. On the inside, you had the material, it's a glazing compound that actually holds the window pane in. That had a lot, the level of PCBs in that were, were much lower, it's like, like 100 and, yeah, 150 parts per million versus 20 or 30,000. So it was a...
So the inside was less?
Pardon me?
The inside had less?
Inside, inside the, around the glass. So what was done in that case is they used with this special tape that goes over that material. We then tested that tape, tape by wiping it with a, with a cloth that had some solvent on it, and that was shipped off to the lab for analysis to make sure we didn't have PCBs breaking through the tape. And then over that tape was, was a sealant, and obviously a non-PCP sealant that was applied over that tape to seal in the tape and create that barrier over the material that had the PCBs below it. That is a, a temporary...
That's an established practice, obviously?
It, it, it has been used, and I think Kim can probably speak more to this than I can. She's, I think, seen this type of, of a sealant used in other applications. It is, it's not a permanent thing, you're not going to use it for 10, 20 years, and it does have to be, some tests will have to be done over time to make sure that there's no breakthrough, but it is effective.
Do you know what time intervals that would be? I mean, are we going to, I, I just would hope that this, we'd stay on top of this.
Yeah.
So if this is temporary, that we do continue to monitor the situation?
This would be considered an interim measure. And what that means is it's a temporary measure to eliminate the direct dermal exposure pathway. And I, and I apologize for using these terms, but that's really what it is, is to eliminate you going up and touching it, because you know how kids like to touch things. So go up and touch it, and then transfer it to your mouth, or, or have it on your hand. So that was really what that was designed for, to take that exposure pathway, a route of exposure to your body, off the table. That's really what that was designed for, a temporary measure. It's going to have to be addressed because we haven't used this long term. It's, again, temporary until we can go in and abate the problem and deal with the, the PCBs that are there. But we have used it, I'm not going to, we have used it in other schools where, and, and again, I'm going to tell you, in this region, we've, we've, I've got major universities I'm working with, I've got other elementary schools, I've, it's a lot. And in areas where you just can't go in and do everything at once. I mean, we're talking universities that have thousands of kids that are going, or thousands of students that go there, we're talking thousands of windows to deal with, and you can't go in and do it all at once. So we put this in place as just a short-term measure to eliminate that, that problem until we can go in and do it in a phased approach and get everything addressed.
Thank you. And one last thing, and so with that comment, it would seem to me that the priorities of the town of Lexington would change with regard to building a new school for Estabrook. If it's only a temporary measure, you can't just keep band-aiding it.
That's right. Please.
Hi, my name is Sissy Porter, and my son spent the last school year in room six, which had the level of 1,800. So I'm just trying to get a handle on that level. I understand that at 300 and to 600, you say it's okay to send the children to school, and I am sending my children to school, I feel comfortable with that. But I'm wondering if the level for the whole school came back at 1,800, would you say, you know, you would shut the school down, or are we looking more at like, something like 10,000 or 5,000?
I'm just going to tell you right now, we have no number. There is no EPA number that says at this level, you must shut a school down. The numbers that are on our website are strictly screening, and that's the reason I said, you know, if you get above that number, we say we want you to go in and investigate and see what's going on and get the numbers down. The only other option is to go through what we just talked about, a risk assessment, to get an idea of site-specific information, and put that into what we do all the time, and Wendy can certainly talk about it, the risk exposure assessment, where you go in and you look at who's using the school, what the concentrations are, and develop a site-specific information. Our numbers are based on general inputs, if you will, average types of inputs, they're not based on site-specific information, so that would be the next step. But I'm not going to tell you, we have a number at this point to say that you must shut a school at this. Now you can go, we can go back and talk, I will certainly go back and talk to our risk assessors, talk some more with Wendy, as well as DPH. I just want to say that DPH, we, we, I was in discussions with them twice today, that's Mass DPH. They're well of the, well, well aware of the situation. I know that they've had discussions with Jerry and the town of Lexington, and I know they've taken an active interest in this, so we'll certainly, they're also looking at the data. And I'm hoping they're going to have some recommendations once they've, once they've had an opportunity to look at it more thoroughly.
And they were invited, said because of the short notice, they just couldn't find somebody to come, but they wanted to, me on their behalf to express that they're, what she just said, actively engaged, paying attention.
I guess I was just looking for more peace of mind, that 1,800 for a year is not that big of a deal.
At this point, I just wanted to let you know also that, and I know, those numbers did come down, and part of it, I think, that they, they were based on that spike, and we'll call that a spike, because it was a really high number and it wasn't seen anywhere else in the school. It was supposedly determined by an inactive operating univent, okay? So if you don't have enough to push air out and bring fresh air in, and I don't know, do, do a lot of people understand the mechanism, what PCBs are, I just want to talk about this just for a second. PCBs are not what we call a volatile compound, which means that they don't instantaneously vaporize. They're not like, you know when you pump gas and you can smell gas? That's what I call a volatile, volatile, the stuff is coming up and you can smell it. PCBs don't act like that, they're very slow releasing, they don't like to volatilize, they like to stay where they are. So if you're getting sometimes high indoor air numbers, that can be a result of not getting fresh air in. PCBs have had a lot of time to, what we call off-gas, very slow off-gas and accumulate, but have nowhere to go, because it's not being properly vented. And that's one of the things that have been talked about here, to try to get the air exchange rate up, to get the, to get all the air, fresh air in, so, so that we can see if we can get those numbers down. So I just wanted to explain a little bit about that accumulation and, and why it may have been higher because that univent wasn't working. That doesn't mean it's been 1,800 for the last year.
Okay.
Right. I, I, I could just take a minute to add on to that, and I agree with everything that Kim just said. The result in that room six, from the July sample, the end of July sampling, that we received the dates, the results on, on August 9th, really represents a, what can be considered a worst-case situation, where the, the, the room was closed and the unit, unit ventilator was not operating. And in addition, central, some of the central exhaust and air delivery systems in the school were also not operating, because they were off for the summer. We acted quickly to start taking air, air sampling results, we took the results as-is, we took the samples as-is, and later looked into the ventilation systems and learned which ones were operating and which ones weren't. So point is that I think we can take that as a worst-case result.
And the numbers have come down.
And the numbers have come down.
Pardon my interrupting. Room six went down more than the other rooms? Would you explain that again, and why?
The room six concentrations went from about 18, 1,800 nanogram per cubic meter, based on the July, what, 27th sampling. And then when we sampled again in, third week in August, the concentrations were 745, and they went down, we think primarily because of the increased ventilation into the room after turning on the unit ventilator, that's basically.
Sure. Thank you for patiently waiting.
Sure. So I just wanted to, to add a little bit to the discussion that, that the gentleman posed, to pat on chronology and, and how things happen. And if you go, if you look through some of the very prudent emails that went around today, Christian and a couple other cooler heads laid it out there, and these guys acted just about as fast as they could, given the mandate that came down and when it came down from the EPA. My wife also sent around an email later in the day outlining sort of how this all came to a head in the last few years, specifically concerning the caulking. I wasn't attacking you on, you guys don't know what the hell you're doing with PCBs, it was just specifically the concerns about industrial, you know, circumstances in schools. So please, don't forget, I understand emotions are running high, but this town is way ahead of the curve nationally, so please don't forget that, all right? You guys got our support.
I have a question on the methodology. First of all, you know, as a homeowner, we have to do a radon test. And if, when we did our radar, radar test, we sampled a couple of rooms, if that level was above a certain level, well, I'm going to put those test sensors in every room, and I'm going to seal the rooms off, et cetera, for four days, that's how it's supposed to be done. Can you do something like that to test on an ongoing basis to get a viable, valid measure? Because everything seems to be met, or running, pivoting off this number that's going to come on Thursday. And I'd like to get some secure, a level of security about whether that number is going to be accurate. I mean, kid, like, with radon, you got to seal the rooms and keep it like that for four days. Is there something like that, that can be done, or does it need to be done?
I, I guess what, can you just explain, I guess what we're trying to figure out here, are you looking, we're not quite sure what you're looking for, because the way you want to look at what you're exposed to is regular, you know, use, use of the school, you don't want to just close off a room and put it under isolation and not ventilate it, because that doesn't really represent...
Right.
...what you are really being exposed to, so maybe you can explain...
Sure. Well, somebody, somebody else had said that if you take a measure, as soon as you ventilate the room, well, of course, it's going to be very low numbers, but then over time...
Right. Well, you want it to stabilize or equilibrate...
Okay.
But you don't want to isolate and close off and not allow it to ventilate, you want to come back and, and reach a steady state, if you will. You want to come back and reach a steady state, if you will.
From the ventilation test.
David, can you talk about these methodologies?
The, so the objective of the measuring, the measurements of the PCB levels in the air is to be representative of conditions that are typical of the school. But we have, that's the overall objective. But generally, what is done, and it's what we did in this case, is we start with a more conservative approach, a worst-case, if you will, approach. And the idea there is that if the levels that you find are the worst-case conditions meet your targets, then you're done, right? You're confident that you've stressed the system as much as you can, is reasonable distress, and you still have a green light, and you're ready to go. Now, we will continue with the testing. We will maintain these simulated conditions of the school with the doors closed, the windows closed, the ventilation operating. We will do some other configurations, too. I know, I know, we'll do some with the windows open, and we'll take some samples in other parts of the school, like the modular parts, the newer parts. And we will, when we do that, we will ensure that we have waited enough time between the end of the enhanced ventilation, this flushing, as we've been calling it, and the initiation of the air sampling. We can do some, make some estimates, some calculations to inform our decision about how long to wait. But we know, without even doing that, we wait overnight, we waited 18 hours, we've got plenty of time for the conditions to equilibrate. That's what we'll do.
Now, on the modular units, they were built after 1978. Is that correct or not? Yes, all right, so there may be less of a risk of the outside, of the caulking causing the PCBs. But does it still conform, because those are modular units and not permanent units?
Does it still, what?
Yeah, there's no, there are no PCBs.
Yeah, we tested the modular caulking.
Okay.
We tested the caulking on the modular units as well, and it has very low PCB concentrations in the caulking, almost non-detect levels.
Okay. And if ventilation is something that helps move the PCBs out of the air, out of the classroom, then, you know, why not install ventilation units in every classroom? I mean, as a temporary solution, because, I mean, more effective ones.
Well, the issue with the increased ventilation in the wintertime is the capacity of the system to heat that air when you bring it into the room. So we have boilers that are a certain capacity, so all the unit ventilators and the steam coils in them are matched to the capacity of the boiler. So to change for more ventilation, we have to increase the capacity of the heating system and the connected piping to get the heat to all the different unit ventilators.
All right, final question. At the end of the day, I think all of us as parents are worried that these chemicals in the air in the classroom are carcinogenic. Why don't we do a site risk assessment to determine exactly what the effect of the PCBs are in kids who have gone through Estabrook for six years, in teachers who have been there for 20-plus years, and in students who have been there for less than five years?
Yeah, that's not, sorry. You want to speak to that? Sorry. You know, you can speak on a broader thing.
Sure. That is a health study. That's a health assessment, health study, an epidemiological study, and not a risk assessment. You know, just a different way of looking at a problem to see whether there is a relationship between what's been here and what's observed. That's an epidemiological study.
So why don't we do that? I mean, if you took Lexington High School students, for example, 20% of them might have gone to Estabrook. Can we compare the level of carcinogenic carcinogens in their blood versus those who've gone to other schools and compare and see if Estabrook really has a problem and what its extent is?
You mean? I think that that is a couple of issues. One is always the power of the numbers. You actually have, we know we have a lot of children that go through here, what are there, 400 at Estabrook? But in terms of epidemiology, you actually need very, very large numbers. And this is certainly something that I would think would be discussed with Mass DPH. And this would be their purview, and it certainly is something that, you know, it's a concern, and it needs to be, you know, be investigated, but it really should be a conversation with Mass DPH, since this becomes their purview.
Thank you very kind.
And it's been proposed that we call this a day at 10:30. However, I just asked, I asked the superintendent what the mechanisms would be for additional questions, because at some point we're going to be done. Either the PTA or directly to his office, so that the dialogue can continue. If it doesn't fit in that time frame, if there's like a huge hue and cry that that's no good, let me know.
Okay. Hi, my name is Beth Sager, and I have three new students at Estabrook. I'm one of the 250, and really glad I haven't been here the past five years. My concern is, is I realize that the experts know what they know, can do what they can do, seem competent, we're all on the same page now. My concern is the education of my children. A lot of us moved to town because, you know, we want our children to have this fabulous education. And Dr. Ash keeps saying, well, you know, I have my scientists, I have my experts, yet he is the expert on our children's education. And I don't think we're looking for a Plan B. I think we're looking for a Plan A on how our children get the 180 days, how our children get the education that we come to expect from Lexington. And I don't see why we would wait another moment finding Plan A, B, C, and D, because quite frankly, I don't think you can add to the experts, and you have your own area that you should be working on right now, and let them do their work. Thank you.
I have a question for the cleanup crew at the end, and I have a couple of questions for you, Dr. Ash, and I promise I'll let you answer them. I am wondering if the time allotted for you to do the removal is what you would normally be allotted and what is normally acceptable? It is. You feel that there was enough time for everything to be cleaned and flushed and tested?
Yeah, it's just, it's a matter of how you stage the work. I mean, you can spread the work out with a small work crew, or you can bring more workers in and work, you know, extended shifts, which was done in this case, I believe, is how they...
Yeah, we had big shifts. We had large shifts, about 10 people, and we worked double shifts, so there was a large crew there.
And you're still working there?
Yes. And we take clearance samples to verify that the work was done effectively.
Thank you. And Dr. Ash, I wanted to know first, did you know that the EPA does not have a count where they would tell you to close the school down? Did you, was that, were you aware of that? Because it was my understanding that you were kind of waiting for them to say, this is unacceptable, close the school down.
I was aware and am aware that they have guidelines. I'm aware that they don't have a specific number you have to close a school, but I asked the same question you asked. Said, okay, what's your judgment? Is the school safe to open? And repeatedly, we got, the answer is that it is acceptable to keep the school open with these numbers. So I didn't frame it in terms of a specific number. I went to the same, the bottom line. In your judgment from the EPA, since you put out these regulations, is it safe to keep school open? That's what I've been told, and I didn't just ask one person, I mean, I asked numerous people. And it's always with qualifiers of, you don't get an absolute answer. And first of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight and all of those people speaking. And so when I said that, some gentleman asked me, he said, so how do you ultimately make a decision when you don't have perfect information? My experience in life is you make that decision all the time. And, but I have a lot of faith, and if you put a group of people, Lexington people, there's some really smart people, you put them in a room, and they look at information, generally, we get to, we get to really good answers. That's been my experience.
Thank you. My problem with that is that we were not originally a part of that decision. That's my big beef, I have to say. But I do want to know that going forward, are you going to allow us to be part of decisions from now on? Are you going to allow us to be a voice in it and weigh in?
Yes, that's the reason for setting up an advisory committee. Now, as we were talking earlier today, he said, so when does the advisory committee end? I guess it ends when the problem goes away. My expectation is, realistically, this problem is not going to be solved in a week. And that's my dream, that's the dream of everybody in the room. But if the problem persists, the conversation persists, and the dialogue will persist, and people will agree and disagree, but it's going to be, I'm really, really working hard to have a transparent process and getting information out to people. Because I do understand that when there isn't a transparent process, it very quickly erodes trust.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one favor? You were up first, but he hasn't spoken yet at all, man. I just called on him.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm the man, thank you.
No, he's the man.
Oh, he's the man, all right. Brian Spencer, I have two kids at Estabrook. Just real quick, because this man just speaks very well and he'll make his point. The EPA, these numbers are confusing people. And I know you, and I don't blame you. Whoever, if the number's 100 for a six-year-old, that could be dangerous, a five-year-old, then, I know there's this wide range that can be in there, but if that number's out there, we don't know what the long-term effect is. Personally, it's my own opinion, we have to protect the most vulnerable in the school, and that's the youngest, and that's the kindergartners. So 300 or 500 range, that should be out the window. That shouldn't be looked at. It should be whatever the youngest is in that school, how that could affect them. We don't know how it's going to affect them long-term. So when we're taking the tests and the advisory committee gets put together, I think we need to look at those, that number as the bottom-line number, getting it below that number to make it as safe as possible, so.
Thank you. What I'm going to say at the moment is, the two people in line will be the last two questioners, but there will be the mechanism, oops, maybe you said, you were in line, I'm just standing. The three people who are in line, she's just cheating, it's going to be a long time. The three people in line will be the last question. There are mechanisms through both the PTA and directly to the superintendent's office prior to the convening of this advisory committee, through which you can then also pose questions. So it's just like a cutoff for tonight, but not of the dialogue.
I have a couple of questions. I'll try and keep them as focused as I can, given that it's late.
Close your mics.
Oh, sorry. I'll try and keep this as focused as I can, so that we can get through the night. Quick question. So what I'm hearing is that Estabrook does not have a central AC, HVAC, it has distributed in each room. Is that correct? So each room is effectively its own problem, own source, own distribution?
Primarily, yes. Each room has its own unit ventilator.
Okay. So taking samples from some rooms gives you kind of an estimate of what things are, but each room has its own potential source of problems. Given that they're roughly similar, it's likely that the sources are similar across the rooms. I don't know, is that a fair estimate?
We've considered that information as well, and we think that the hypothesis that you just posed is a reasonable one. We intend to test it.
Are there rooms in Estabrook that are newer or older? I don't know anything about the history of Estabrook and how it was built, but are there rooms that are newer from 1979 or?
Yeah, there's a couple of rooms that were added at a later date. I'm not sure what year it was.
Have you tested any of those rooms? Do you see a difference?
We have not tested those rooms yet, but they will be part of our next round.
Have you tested the modulars?
We tested the caulk around the modulars, but not the air.
Okay. I just want, if I can ask you, so if we see 700 or, you know, 300 to 700 ranges, from your concern, the school could stay open all year at those levels and be considered safe? Is that a takeaway?
I actually don't have an opinion on that topic right now. I really don't. I mean, this is, this is an emerging issue. I'm getting an education tonight and a lot of things that you're getting an education on.
I guess I just want to, I think it's probably, it's clear to people here, I just want to make sure it's clear to everyone here. I see a difference in opinion, at least, between some of the audience and some up here, where it's being treated here as a scientific and facilities issue of how do we get to it in a long-term manner? And people here are saying, this is a preventable risk. We do a lot to try and prevent risks in our children. Because it's preventable, we should be doing something now and looking at near-term solutions, and not just what is the ultimate long-term solution. I have no question that, given what I'm seeing here, six months to a year from now, this is going to be a solved question. My question is, what happens between now and when it's a solved question? And from what I can tell, outside air normally has fractions of a nanogram per cubic meter to several. What we're seeing inside of here is a factor of 100 to 1,000 times higher than the outside air. I hear that it's typical for interior air to be higher, but not that much higher. So, you know, as a parent, I'm really trying to figure out, what are the alternatives? And so I have to ask you, what are the alternatives? Are there two alternatives? Either send them to Estabrook or do something and keep them at home until this is solved? Is that it? Are there other, anything else on the table?
We just began discussion this afternoon on that topic. I mean, it's a very fair question, and hopefully, there would be another answer besides those two options.
Okay.
But it's going to really require some real thought as to whether or not they're viable.
I'm sorry, what? Right, 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 right.
Hang on a second, hang on a second. I'm going to be, mic boy.
You're not even in line or anything.
I'm sorry, and I should have stood up, so I apologize. I just want to make sure that whatever decision it is, it's something that's given to us as parents, so we can make decisions. I appreciate what everyone said, I've heard it, I think to some degree I understand the scientific piece of it. But my concern is, we have, tomorrow, school's closed, that's fine, but we have Tuesday, Wednesday, and we're not going to really know anything until Thursday. And as a parent who kept her children out, I would really like to know something before that, so I can properly plan.
We're going to work as fast as we possibly can, and as soon as I have something to share, I'm going to share it. I mean, there's a real urgency to develop, to get information, to do the mitigation work, figure out what's going on, and consider our options. And so that's going to be, that's going to be the focus of a lot of people's work over the next week. And just as soon as I have something to say that makes sense, I'll share it, and then you'll know about it.
I asked the superintendent earlier this afternoon if there was a specific website on things like, you know, for this meeting, we're going to post, and the answers to pre-group questions and updated data and so forth. And he said, yes, there was a link in the right corner. I couldn't find it, but they're working on that as a, almost real-time, so it's only HTTP slash S colon, so, colon slash S, without the W's, lps.lexingtonma.org. Okay? So that's the conduit for real-time information, short of like getting everybody together.
Yeah, so please go to the LPS website.
So that was giving my, that was giving pretty much my final question. How can I find out, other than waiting for the informative emails that we get at a periodic basis, can I do anything to go and find the information? Is there ways that I can interact advisory? I've already sent in an email to try and get in on that.
We're going to try, we're going to try to communicate as frequently as we can through a global connect system, which is an email system.
Okay.
All right. In addition, we send this to the PTA, I guess you've got a Google group, that's a second means, but the official communication will be through our global connect email system. All documents will be on the homepage of our website, and we're going to, we're in the process of putting a really clear label. The label said, "Health and Safety Alerts," and it was mentioned in the letter that went home. We're now going to make it really crystal clear, is you just go to the homepage, there's a link, so all the documents historically collected will be there. So if somebody doesn't get their email, they miss it for any particular reason, or they want to go back and see an old document, they're all going to be posted.
And that's on the LPS?
It went up at 5:00.
That's the LPS website?
Yep.
Okay. So if we want to submit questions online and have those answered, as opposed to...
Well, there are two possibilities. One, you send them to me, and I try to answer emails, you know, all kinds of hours of the day, or send them to the PTA to collect them and channel them to me. Depending on the question you ask, I'm...
Depending on the question you ask, I may have to just write back and say, I got to get you the answer, because if it's more of a technical nature, I'm not going to pretend I know the answer. But I will move quickly to get answers as quickly as I can.
I suspect that would be a good way of ending, coming up with a frequently asked questions list.
Yep, that, we've already talked about that today, too.
I just want you to answer that.
Thank you.
I'm going to make sure you have all of the documents that have been generated today, and the document, all the plans and the data, as part on that website for a link.
On your behalf, I'll make sure that some mechanism, like a list server or ongoing conversation site is part of what they try and create. I see a nodding over your, your screen.
My first thing is a question. When we were talking about lead before and testing for lead, is there a private thing available if somebody did want to have their child tested for PCB levels in their blood?
Right. When we did this study down in URI, we actually, we had to use the lab at the Harvard School of Public Health, because there really is no commercially available option. It's not a test that's a standard medical test, and it's a pretty highly specialized test to do, requires some very specialized equipment, as well as knowledge and how to do it properly. Personally, I'm not aware of any commercial lab that you could go to.
I mean, because I looked online, and you see it online, but that might just...
Yeah, it's, you know, we can certainly, we could, that could be one of these questions we hunt down for you, to see if people are interested in, in, in looking into that, what we can see if there's any lab out there that does this test.
My children are younger, but if I had somebody who was there for six years, I might want to have that done.
Right.
My other thing is a comment, and not to tell the school system what to do or operate out of fear. At 7:30 this morning, I wasn't going to send my kid to school. At 8:00, I spoke to a family friend who is, who spoke highly of you, he's also an environmental engineer. And he said, couple of days, don't worry about it. And so I sent my kid to school, and, but then I worry about, he's going there and seeing his friend, isn't there? Why isn't my friend there? Don't, you know, why are five kids not here? What's going on? And I tried to reassure him, you know, not to get into it, he's eight, he's not going to know what I'm talking about. But we're just trying to be cautious, it's nothing to worry about. But I would really think hard about whether or not, hearing from a lot of people in the audience, that a fair number probably will keep their kids home again before they find out about the testing. And the kind of psychological stress that might be being put onto the kids, who again, aren't seeing their friends there, but are saying, why am I here? So for the sake of a couple of days, I, I might consider not having school on Tues, Tuesday and Wednesday. If there is school on Tuesday and Wednesday, I'll probably send my kids. I'm, I'm kind of of the party that, because I have my third party that I spoke to, that a couple of more days probably wouldn't make a difference. But there is that whole kind of psychological issue with the kids. Don't you care about me, mommy, as much as my friends care about their kids? So that's my two cents. Yeah, no, I said, I said the same way, you know, am I like, you know, am I, I'm a, you know, part of me felt like the bad mommy doing that, and, you know, because there's logical and there's emotional, and, and so just my two cents on that.
Excuse me. Did you, the person in the back with the strength, did you want to, you get the last thing, if you want to?
I just like the idea of more communication, please. I think we all felt that this was all, we weren't communicating well. Just the more information mattered, good or bad, and also what we're going to be doing in school, the PTA has recommendations about what to do. I think one of them that comes to mind, and one of the things we got was hand washing with the children. I don't really sanitize, I think it's actually hand washing, sorry about that. I know it's a lot of work, but are we implementing those in the school, starting, you know, as soon as we can, those things that were recommended by the EPA, things they say we can do to improve the situation or help with it? I want to be sure, because I'm someone who didn't send my child, that if I know those things are happening, I maybe want to try to do so. So that's all. But the communication, please.
I have a very quick question about the building. Did I understand correctly that some of the unit ventilators have their air exchanged with the basement rather than the outdoors? If it's so, which classrooms would that be?
Well, it comes around where I'm at. I'll start, and if I miss something, pack, jump in. I think we just need to clarify, is, is what it is. All of the unit ventilators bring air from outside. Some of them have, the mechanics themselves, the fans, are located in the basement, but they're connected by ductwork to an opening on the outside of the school where they pull in air. You're welcome.
I give you my solemn promise, I'll give you all the information and withhold nothing.
outside be contributing to the indoor air levels? Highly unlikely, highly unlikely, given the concentrations that are measured in the soil, which are generally quite low.